All right, I'd like to call this regular board meeting of the Board of Education. I'll start us out by reciting our vision statement. Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. We'd like to ask for a moment of silence this evening for this to recognize the passing of Alex West, who was a sophomore at Madison East High School. Alex is remembered as someone who believed in living life. He was adventurous and was always looking forward to his next adventure. Alex had a large circle of friends from many schools. He collected people. Once you were in his community, you belonged to him. Alex's passing has taken a significant toll on so many students and staff in the East community. We remember them tonight. Please join me in participating in a moment of silence to honor Alex West. Thank you. Lomel Fredrickson is an eighth grader at Hamilton Middle School where she plays in the eighth grade orchestra. In December, Lomel competed in the Walgreens National Percanto Competition in Chicago and won first place in the junior orchestral division. She played the final movement of Birch Pronounced Violin Percanto. The Gala Concert was just last weekend. You can watch her play on the Midwest Young Artists Conservatory Facebook page.
Well, Lomel, if you want to turn on your mic, we're absolutely ready for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be playing the Padre Mini 24 Caprices, Caprice Number 20.
Lomel, can you get a little bit closer to your mic, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lomel, what's next for you? What are your plans for the future?
In the summertime, excuse me, in the summertime, I am planning on attending a summer camp in New York, which is specifically meant for string instruments. And in April, I'm playing in Symphony Center with the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra.
Joining us, Lomel, really appreciate you taking the time. We loved it.
Yeah, we're rooting for you and all you do in the future. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Marianne, could you come on screen, please? Thank you.
I have a resolution recognizing you. Marianne, our school counselor at Capital High School was named to the nation's top school counselor as a finalist for the American School Counselor of the Year. Thank you so much for joining us. And would you like to say anything before I read your resolution?
If I could, just really quick, yes. First, thank you for recognizing me. I'm honored to work in MMSD and at Capital High. And I hope that by being able to highlight my school counseling program, the work of school counselors in MMSD and across the country, I can act as an advocate for our profession. And I also recognize that this has provided me with a platform and a responsibility that I hope to be able to continue to draw attention to the brilliant students at Capital High and the work that we're doing with them there. So again, just thank you so much for this honor for my community.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight and for all that you do. Jill Cook, ASCA Executive Director, was quoting as saying, "Each year, the School Counselor of the Year program shows us what the research tells us, that school counselors have significant impact on students' academic achievement, social, emotional development, and plans for life after graduation through their dedication, contribution, and excellence." These finalists have demonstrated their commitment to the values and missions of the school counseling profession. We feel incredibly grateful to have Ms. Matt guiding, supporting, and loving our scholars who attend Capital High, one of our six high schools in Madison. She recognizes their brilliance and promise and stops at nothing to ensure they have all they need to graduate ready for college, career, and community. Ms. Matt has deep roots in Madison Public Schools for over thirteen years, has consistently demonstrated her commitment to supporting students and seeking alternatives to traditional high school experiences, including many first-generation college students. It is because of the strong trusting and authentic relationship she cultivates with students that she is one of our district's most valuable assets. Many congratulations, Ms. Matt. We would love, like, we've already heard a few words from you, so I will jump to the part where we read the resolution. Whereas MMSD is honored to announce that Maureen Matt, school counselor at Capital High School, was named one of the nation's top counselors as a finalist for American School Counselor of the Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education and the MMSD community recognizes and congratulates Ms. Matt for her outstanding accomplishment for serving the community of Capital High School. Yet further resolve this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education's minutes for the meeting of February 28, 2022. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marianne, for joining us.
Ms. Matt, before you go, is she still there?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, and I don't often raise the mic up on this, but I've just heard so much about you from your colleagues about the work that you do, not just at Capital, but how you serve as a true model. When individuals talk about counselors over the years, and I've been in this game for over thirty years, when your name came up and all of your accomplishments, I just want to say thank you. It's a pleasure to be here as your colleague working in MMSD. We thank you so much for recognizing us, not only locally but nationally, but more importantly, what you do for our students. Thank you so much. Bless to you. Much love.
All right, I'm going to give us our summaries of written statements before we go into the written statements. So we have one in support of allowing the DECA team the opportunity to attend the DECA International Meeting in Atlanta in 2022, one in support of reducing class sizes and expanding educational offerings offerings in the face of declining enrollment by investing in the teacher force. And with that said, we'll go into public comment.
Okay, our first speaker is Catherine White. If you could turn your heel on, Catherine, and when you start, I'll begin the timer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm coming before you this evening to ask you to reconsider the MMSD phased approach to mask protocols, which relates to Agenda 5.2 for tonight's meeting. Let me begin with a brief disclaimer, as I fear what I'm about to say might be dismissed as political. I'm not a Trump supporter. I consider myself to be very progressive and liberal. I don't think the coronavirus pandemic is a hoax, and I myself am vaccinated. That being said, I am also a licensed psychologist, and I have a psychotherapy practice where I provide therapy to children, adolescents, and adults. Up until this year, I also taught research methods and statistics at Marquette University. I consider myself a scientist, and I believe we have to consider all the science and all the data, including social and psychological science. The national conversation around mandatory masking in schools is now shifting to acknowledge the developmental, academic, mental, and social detriments these policies are causing children right now. Potential harms from long-term masking are poorly understood, but I'm convinced that masking is harmful to kids. Several scientific studies do show negative effects on speech and language development, learning, and socioemotional development. Just a few months ago, the Surgeon General issued an advisory on the nation's youth mental health crisis and the pandemic's impact on mental health. And I believe such harm should not be incurred without a clear, significant benefit. And well-controlled studies have not demonstrated any clear benefit to masking students. At the beginning of the pandemic, I think mask mandates made sense. We didn't know who was vulnerable or how to protect them. There wasn't a vaccine, et cetera. And now so much has shifted. We know that kids are at very, very low risk of illness. We know they're not responsible for increased transmission. We know who's vulnerable and what will protect them, and we have the tools available for use. And perhaps most importantly, as of Friday, the CDC updated their recommendations for schools. And the CDC now only recommends universal school masking in communities at the high level. Our community thankfully is not at the high level. We are at the low-risk level. And I understand the plan was to reassess the mask mandate after spring break. However, I believe it is appropriate for MMSD to update its phased approach in light of this new guidance and information. The new guidance clearly allows for return to preventative measures if necessary, and their new metrics have demonstrated predictive capacity. Our children have sacrificed a lot to protect us, and our community has done a really great job of getting vaccinated and keeping risk low. We need to continue to let the science guide us, and reclaiming normal life for our kids is the best way to support and protect them. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Catherine. I need to interrupt the meeting for a second because I've been informed that Cynthia Green has a few students here who were scheduled to help her with the superintendent's announcements around the ACT topic, and they have to go to a class at 6:30. So we are wondering if we want to just pause to let them do their part and then come back to the public appearances. I would need the board to let me know how you feel about that.
Read a motion, Bob.
You can.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that, Bob. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay, Cindy Green, could you please come forward and bring your students? Thank you, Catherine.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for the adjustment. I have Yowanna, Marquannis, Kiam, and Odessa here. If you could all turn on your cameras, and I'm going to yield to Dr. Jenkins first. And then I am going to open it up to our amazing scholars, and thank you for your flexibility, but they do have class at 6:30.
And given that, we know that our students have to get out of here at 6:30. I won't steal the thunder, but I want to say thank you to Ms. Green for working with our students in terms of trying to make sure that we're being very intentional and working with all of our students as they're preparing to take the ACT. But more important, that we're trying to reduce some of the anxieties that some of our students may have in preparing for the test. So I'll stop right there. Let Ms. Green present the students.
Yeah, so thank you. So a few of our students that are here tonight are in the process of taking the ACT prep opportunity that we have offered. And I'm going to let them share their experiences with you, and they could just tell you why they decided to take the class and what's going on for them. So I'm going to start with Kiam. Kiam is over at our Early College STEM Academy. And Kiam, why don't you go ahead and just share a little of your experience and your thoughts?
I mean, to keep it short, honestly, it's been like amazing because like before the program, like you, teachers talk about the ACT, they tried to do a little bit of preparation. We were really just like looking into the dark abyss and like trying to take a step forward, and people have no idea what's going on. Even like my friend had a panic attack, like actual panic attack in class when teachers started talking about ACT. But I found like with this program, it kind of shows you it's like not that scary and like guides you through it and like gives you all honestly, every single tool that you would need for the course and for the test. I feel like this, like the ACT prep course gave you, but yeah.
Thank you, Kiam. I'm going to turn it to Odessa. If Odessa, you just want to share a little bit of your thoughts and your experience.
Hi. So far, this class has been really good for me. It's really helped like reduce my anxiety around the tests. And I feel like it was really helpful because not only did our instructors like show us some strategies and skills we could use, but we actually got a lot of time to like take practice tests and get a lot of repetition and really like learn how to like implement those strategies and skills. So I feel like a lot more confident going into the test now than I did before the course.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention Odessa is over at East High School, so sorry about that, Odessa. Marquannis, do you want to share? Marquannis comes from West High School.
Hello. So the class is like really helpful for me. Like, I am very terrified because I'm horrible at taking tests, and I feel like getting some extra help would be lovely for me. I mean, I'm still very nervous since the test is like next week, but it really has helped me so much.
Thank you, Marquannis. We appreciate that. And Yowanna, who is over at La Follette High School, is our last scholar that we have sharing a little bit tonight. Yowanna, you want to share?
Yep. Hi, everyone. So basically, I'm just going to go with a different question really quickly, just because you don't have that much time to explain our answers. But I do agree with the rest of the students about how this class has made it less stressful to take the ACT. And I'd like to talk about why I feel like it's important to take this course and to keep this course moving forward for years to come for many students. So although I do understand some of the public opinion about why this course shouldn't be a thing and why they don't like the ACT, I do believe that this course is very like needed because some schools like Georgetown and Oxford aren't ACT optional. They do require ACT or SAT, which is we don't take the SAT at, you know, Wisconsin. So I feel like this course would definitely help kids who want to go to Georgetown, Oxford, et cetera, that need test like test scores. It would help them be less stressed and possibly get a better score. Also, some scholarships do require an ACT score. So I do believe that this course would definitely help out with that and some apprenticeships as well. So I would say please keep this course for years to come, and it will help out a lot of students. Thank you.
I just want to thank each one of you. I know you've got to get into a different Zoom and get into class for tonight, but just so appreciative of all of you. Thank you for lifting your voices. We have a little more, but I know we're going to get back to the regularly scheduled agenda, and then if we need to have a further discussion around this, we will. But thank you for shifting so that we could hear from our young people. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Jenkins real quick.
No, I just want to say thank you to the students. We're going to go ahead and get back to the main agenda, but all of you tonight represented MMSD so well and represented your families in yourselves. Thank you for that insight as we continue to see how we can support you.
Okay, we're going to return to public appearances. Our next speaker is Michelle Byus.
Good evening. I am the, I'm the Latin teacher at, the only Latin teacher in the district, and West is losing its program next year. This is devastating to me personally and to the many hundreds of parents and students who have lodged their objections over the last week. There's a larger issue at play, however, that goes well beyond the Latin program. MMSD is no longer asking itself the most important questions. How do we provide an excellent education to all students? How do we provide equitable, high-quality, and diverse educational offerings in the sciences, art, music, and languages? The reality on the ground is that MMSD is currently putting its efforts into answering a different set of questions. How can we cram as many students into as few classes as possible? How do we get teachers to do more with less? And now that we're losing students, which teachers and what programs can we cut further? Board members, you need to invest in and shore up your professional teaching core. We are the ones who are showing up every single day and working directly with students. A number of students have told me in the last week that they and their families are looking at other high school options because they no longer believe that they can receive a high-quality education in our district. This isn't about me or about the Latin program. This is a district-wide problem that can only be solved by you, the board. Excellent class offerings, the ones that make MMSD outstanding and inspire kids to go to school, are being eliminated. Class sizes are far too large for teachers to connect each and every day with each and every student. Students are suffering, feeling warehoused, and not getting the education they deserve. Teachers are burning out, feeling exploited, and not getting the support they need to do their jobs properly, much less well. If you as a board do not arrest this spiraling problem, more students will leave, and even more programs will be cut. Please let me circle back. How do we provide an excellent education to all students? How do we provide equitable, high-quality, and diverse educational offerings? We do it by reducing rather than expanding class sizes. We do it by expanding rather than reducing our offerings to students who are behind in their learning and profoundly affected by the pandemic. Instead, students are currently left to fight over limited resources. My own students are not focused on learning right now. They realize that they will not be able to get the sequential world language courses to enable them to apply to the colleges of their choice. They see their futures being pruned away at the stroke of an administrator's pen. We found out just today that the study halls at West are going to be massive next year because not only language, but also business classes, arts classes, and even physics classes are being affected by these cuts. Teachers are left fighting for scraps of FTE like so many hyena on a carcass. We have to divert time and energy away from teaching in order to market ourselves at our own course offerings so that we're not the next one to get caught. If it is not possible to support the teacher corps because the funding simply is not there, may I ask which non-classroom administrative cuts are also under consideration? I'm not privy to the numbers, but I suspect that losing six administrators would buy you ten essential classroom teachers. It's the teachers who are the living embodiment of the shared values of this district, and it is the teachers who are making a difference day in and day out in the lives of our students who are behind and suffering. Thank you for hearing me this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ava Adamani.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I am Ava Adamani. I am a sophomore at West High School and a first-year DECA participant. I've had the honor of being one of the twenty participants to qualify to compete at Atlanta, Georgia for ICDC and would like very much to have the opportunity to compete at the national level. I have already learned so much from my experience in DECA and feel that this experience teaches me skills that I use in the real world, and that makes me feel a lot more confident about my future. I've had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Cole the beginning of the school year for business and marketing. And she was the one who introduced me to DECA. She has supported all of my fellow teammates throughout our own DECA journeys. She is a wonderful DECA advisor as well. She has invested so much time into our entire team to get us to this point. Like I mentioned, this is my first year, and along with that, that is my first year of in-person high school. DECA has been a significant part of my positive introduction to high school. Like so many of my fellow teammates, I have worked hard for this opportunity, and I hope you allow us to go. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nana Osaki.
Hello, my name is Nana, and I'm a senior at Madison West High School. And I am the chapter co-president of our DECA group at Madison West High School, and I'm also the dancing captain. And so just a little bit about DECA. So DECA is a business club that kind of gives students an opportunity to kind of learn more about future career choices as well as just learning a lot more public speaking skills and also interviewing. So personally, I am not really looking into a business career in the future. I'll be studying biology at Duke University next year. However, DECA has really given me so many opportunities to kind of get to know how to really act in a professional environment such as this. And I joined DECA my sophomore year, and I joined because of a trip, the Kalahari trip that they offered. And it was so much fun, and it was probably one of the most memorable experiences I've had. And these past three years, I've had the pleasure and honor of qualifying for international career development conferences that DECA offers, just their highest level of competition after district-state. And however, because of COVID, I haven't ever been able to attend. And as my last year, along with many of my other peers, I would love to be able to go to this opportunity. And with state, we had a lot of trouble kind of getting permission to attend the event. And the event is fully masked, and we can also find ways to, you know, make sure everyone that's attending from West is vaccinated. Our advisor, Ms. Cole, has done such a wonderful job trying to mitigate these limitations that we have through MMSD rules. And it also made the opportunity of going to state a little less equitable because Ms. Cole wasn't able to organize staying over in like Geneva. And so while I was able to stay over and compete in all my events, some other kids were not, as it just didn't become an option for them without Ms. Cole as their chaperone and things like that. So by getting full permission to attend this very safe event in Atlanta, Georgia, we are able to kind of get rid of, you know, the disadvantages some kids may have, and none of the costs are on MMSD, so it would not be an additional fee for like, you know, for you guys to have to consider. It is fully paid for by each competitor, but also Ms. Cole will be providing resources for many of the students or for all of the students that need extra funding through fundraisers. uh, for many of the students or for all, um, of the students that need, um, extra funding through fundraisers and things like that. Um, and as a senior, I would really, really, really appreciate your consideration and letting us go to this event. Um, you know, I've been looking forward to it every year. Uh, however, it's never really happened for me. Um, and I'm sure this would be a great opportunity for, uh, our new members such as Ava, um, who haven't, you know, really experienced a full, uh, DECA experience. And Ms. Cole has also been such an amazing, um, advisor for us. And, you know, being able to go would be really, really great for our chapter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Adamani.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll keep my remarks brief because you've already heard from Ava and from Nana. Um, but I'm Ava's dad. Uh, she's a sophomore at West and just would like to speak in support of the DECA team of which I believe there's about twenty individuals who have qualified at the state level to advance to the national, uh, competition in Atlanta. Uh, I did also have the opportunity to be a judge at the regional and at the, uh, state competition. Uh, of course, I don't judge anyone in the, uh, district with my connections, uh, with my daughter there, but it's a such an amazing event. These kids from all over the state that competed last week in Lake Geneva, really, um, that DECA experience has really allowed them to get a lot of confidence. Uh, they've learned a lot of skills in business, marketing, um, decision-making, and it's, uh, quite impressive and inspiring. So it's a great program. I hope that the district is in support of these kids being able to kinda take their competition to the next level and, uh, to advance to Atlanta to compete. And, uh, thank you for your time again this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Loving.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I am speaking in support of consent memo ten point twenty to install RV compatible outlets for the Celebrate Smiles Dental Program. I am, uh, Ken Loving. I'm a family physician and the CEO at Access Community Health Centers. And I wanna thank, uh, both Dr. Jenkins and Carrie Stamfle for helping with the dental program that we have partnered with the schools on, uh, for twelve years now. Uh, one of our most important innovations in my time at Access, and I've been there for twenty-five years, has been the Celebrate Smiles Program. We started that in twenty-ten. Uh, it was a mobile, uh, vehicle that we had and we took care of kids and provided them with preventive and restorative dental care in nine schools in twenty-ten. Over the years, uh, we built a strong partnership with the schools. And, uh, before we had to suspend our operations because of the pandemic in March of twenty-twenty, uh, we had expanded that program from the nine schools to forty-six schools in Madison and Sun Prairie, caring for, uh, almost four thousand children that year. Uh, and I wanna emphasize that partnership with the schools and, and that partnership continues. Um, we are back in the schools as of this fall. At the moment, we're doing restorative care, or I'm sorry, preventive care only. And what we know and why the program was created was that many of these children are unable to obtain dental services. And so that, that restorative care by the dentist in the schools has been, uh, really the most important part of that program over the years. Uh, we are, uh, recognizing the space constraints in the schools. And so the next chapter of Celebrate Smiles will, uh, be with a mobile vehicle. And we have committed to purchasing that vehicle where we'll be able to have our dental team, uh, providing both the screening and the restorative care for kids at the different schools. Uh, but we need those electrical outlets updated as one of the steps to the, the resurgence of the program that we'll see here over the next couple of years, I hope. And so, uh, I appreciate all your, all of your, uh, consideration for that, uh, particular, uh, uh, consent memo on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zulkey.
Hi, my name is Alex Zulkey and I'm here to talk about the West Chapter of DECA and the national competition in Atlanta this spring. Um, I am one of the student co-presidents of the West Chapter along with DECA, of DECA along with Nana Osaki who spoke earlier. As both Ava and Nana mentioned, we recently competed at the Wisconsin DECA State Competition and it was a great success. We had twenty students qualify for the national competition, I C D C, um, this spring and April. We have worked for months leading up to this, competing the district competition and recently state, which is why it means so much to our chapter to be able to attend, uh, the I C D C competition in April. We worked, uh, we spent hours and hours practicing role plays and tests, making projects and preparing for competition. Personally, this is very important to me, especially as it's my senior year and my last and only chance to attend I C D C in person. As it was canceled my sophomore year to COVID and virtual my junior year. DECA has meant so much to me throughout high school. I can personally say that I've truly grown as a public speaker, competitor and leader with this amazing program. I understand that there is no overnight trip policy at the moment, or a no overnight trip policy at the moment, but I ask you to reconsider. Ms. Cole has been the DECA advisor for eleven years and I'm confident that she can organize this trip in a very safe manner, um, to ensure that all students stay safe on this trip and compete at the next level. I, along with Nana and many other students, have worked for years to get to this point. And we would love an opportunity to be able to compete in I C D C Atlanta in spring. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Glennberg.
Sorry. Hello there. Um, I too am here to speak in support of MMSD students in person participation at DECA's I C D C International Career Development Conference in Atlanta. I am a business owner here in Madison. I am also a DECA alumnus. Um, I myself have volunteered as a judge at the Wisconsin DECA State Career Development Conference uh, twenty-two years in a row. And, um, this will be the first year that I will be volunteering to judge at the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta. Uh, I am also a West High School parent. I have a daughter, uh, at West who qualified for participation in the International Conference in Atlanta, um, with her second place win in the state conference last week. Um, this is her third year qualifying. Her first year was twenty-twenty when the world, uh, shut down. The, the country shut down and, uh, the International Career Development Conference was canceled that year. Last year she qualified. Um, DECA went virtual and, uh, she submitted a video, uh, presenting her business plan. She did make it to finals and then presented her plan. Uh, her small business startup plan to, uh, over Zoom to two judges standing in as potential investors. And, uh, she happened to finish in the top ten then. Um, participation in the conference, in the competition, um, means that students lead one-on-one or sometimes as who was the case for her last year, one-on-two business meetings, uh, with real-world business professionals volunteering to judge at the competitions. And while, uh, participating last year virtually was as real as any uh, business experience, as those of us who spend all too much time on Zoom each day can attest. This year, DECA will not allow participation virtually. And so I am asking you to support, um, their participation in person in Atlanta, whatever that means. Perhaps that means parents signing a waiver agreeing not to hold MMSD responsible for safety or costs arising from risks of either of those rising from COVID or perhaps, uh, parents need to agree to accept the risks themselves. I can say I am willing to accept those risks on behalf of my family, as I'm sure many parents, uh, of DECA students are uh, willing. And, um, the, I, I can say that the skills gained through participation as an alumnus myself uh, are invaluable. And firsthand, I can say DECA makes careers. Um, so I do want the MMSD students to have the experience, uh, to gain the skills and the confidence that come from participation in the International Career Development Conference. And that's all I have to say. So thank you for letting me speak on this and thank you for helping remove the barriers to enable their in-person participation.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and excuse my pronunciation, Xi Shi Li?
Uh, yes, that is. Alright, that is me. Um, or you can call me Jeff. Um, I am a freshman from West High School. Uh, and before I begin, I would like to express my, my earnest respect for, uh, all the members here. Uh, I appreciate, um, the service, um, you have done for the district. And I would like to ask, um, who overwatches, uh, West High School?
So Li, uh, there's something going on in the background, uh, where you are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, there is a background music. I'm, I'm at the restaurant, so yeah, there's a music and I'm sorry for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would like to ask who overwatches, um, West High School here? Alright, uh, so I'd like to, um, ask that, uh, so if has came to my, uh, notice that, uh, in the library of, uh, West High School, the flag, uh, is, um, there is an absent of flag in the library. And, um, and in fact, I have saw the flag being, uh, being, um, hidden on the, on a shelf, which, and, uh, besides that, um, and besides, besides that, the Pledge of Legions is offered, uh, only, um, uh, every, every every Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, from my observations of, uh, during this month. And, uh, if you, if you allow me, I'd like to recite the, uh, Wisconsin State Statue, uh, one-one-eight dot oh-six, uh, flag, Pledge of Legions and National Anthem. Um, section one, every school board and the governing body of every private school shall cause the US flag to be displayed uh, in this, in the school room or from a flag staff or each school ground during the school hours of each school day. Uh, and section two is, um, every public school shall offer the Pledge of Legions or the National Anthem in grade one to twelve each school day. So I, I'd like to ask that, um, uh, why have not West High School been following the, uh, the two sections of the Wisconsin State Statue?
Well, thank you, Mr. Li. Um, this, this is not a place for dialogue right now, but you are bringing this to the intention of superintendent.
Okay.
Follow up with you, um, if you could at another time. Is that, is that possible?
Yes. And, uh, how, how would you contact me for the follow-ups?
Have your phone number and your email address when you signed up to speak.
Yes, okay. Alright, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. Our next speaker is Erin Farrell Adamani.
Hi, yes. Um, I wanna thank you for your time and consideration and I will be brief. Um, I am speaking in support of the DECA's chapter attending in Atlanta. And I wanna say I can't say enough about Ms. Cole. I mean, she is a star teacher. She is committed to these students and, um, when I think about the barriers or the roadblocks that she had for, um, the Lake Geneva offering with the weather and unable to spend the night, she was just outstanding and stellar. And I have complete confidence in her capacity to take these students to Atlanta. And I think the sooner she gets the green light, the, she will hit the ground running and she will just knock this out of the ballpark. Um, so please ensure that all roadblocks are removed for her to take these students to Atlanta. And then, like the violin student at the beginning, I hope in May they are back here sharing their successes to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wyatt Elmore.
Um, I'm so sorry. I'm not Wyatt. However, I did get a message from him that he wasn't able to actually get into the speaking platform, so we had to submit a written, um, note. Thank you.
Thank you. I will look up that written note. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I, I do see him. Sorry, I'm just checking my other list. I believe that we have heard from all the speakers who successfully signed up. Uh, Michael Jones, I know, is in the room and I would like to, um, ask him to please take the next, uh, speaking opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne, also for squeezing me in. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I know many of you, uh, hopefully got my message, but I did want to, uh, reiterate that, uh, two things. One, um, in support of keeping the mask, uh, masking requirement indoors uh, within MMSD schools extended, uh, through spring break. Um, you know, in terms of the last couple of years, uh, I've learned many things. But one of the things I have also learned is that I am not a public health, uh, doctor and expert. I have been listening to Dr. Friedrich, Dr. Wall, Dr. Henderson and Dr. De Mary in terms of what the, what the best practices would be. And, um, any change in the policy, uh, we should also really be considering our most vulnerable, especially our immunocompromised, uh, students and staff who would have to make significant changes. Um, you know, in a, with a quick moment's notice, if this policy was just quickly overturned, um, which would cause a massive headache, uh, without proper planning, as well as the lack of, uh, planning uh, for, for those who need to make, make the necessary adjustments. Second thing I also wanted to just advocate for is, uh, for the COVID relief package that is, uh, going to be presented to you tonight. It is, uh, missing, uh, our recommendation for including um, people who need to stay, who, or who need to quarantine because of, um, because they need to look after, uh, family members as well as those who failed the district screener. And those, uh, both categories are huge impacts in terms of our ability to staff schools. And, uh, any COVID relief package that misses them, uh, would be extremely detrimental for the morale of, uh, district employees, as well as advocating for the ability for the two mental health days, which were, uh, granted, uh, very magnanimously by this board in order to, uh, transfer into the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Um, we have multiple, uh, work sites, especially high schools where the employees are not able to access those mental health days because of staffing shortages, as well as our clerical and custodians, uh, staff who wouldn't be able to access it after June thirtieth, even though they work the whole months of July and August. So from an equity standpoint, in terms of making sure that the two days are equally accessible for all employees for the school year, we humbly ask that, uh, they are able to be carried over into the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year or be added on as, uh, additional sick days to, to the employees, uh, leave bank. So in order of making sure that everyone, even if they're not able to access it, are being recognized for, uh, the hard work that they have been putting in, especially these last, uh, two years. So, uh, I, if you want to follow up, I'm here and I am always willing to engage with y'all. So y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna check and make sure that we have, uh, heard from all of the speakers who registered or attempted to, uh, register. Thank you. I believe that concludes our public hearing. Thank you.
Alright, now for board president announcements. We'll hear from Board Vice President, Sadien Castro.
Thank you. So for Black History Month, uh, throughout February, the MMSD community has engaged in a variety of educational and enrichment activities and events, celebrating Black History Month. This includes Read Your Heart Out, which brings Black families and community members together through lit, through live and recorded readings for MMSD students. Schools across the district displayed student art and classwork describing significant historical figures, events and Black excellence. Uh, and continuing to celebrate our students. On a daily basis, MMSD scholars display leadership and go above and beyond to achieve their, their greatest dreams. Here are just a few examples of the outstanding students in the Madison Metropolitan School District. Here is Sotos, a senior at West High School, received a twenty twenty-two Young Arts Award in Photography and Design. Sotos was recognized at the merit level, the organization's third highest honor and joins seven hundred twenty other visual, literary and performing artists from throughout the country. Another West senior, Tamiya Johnson, will attend next month's Congress of Future Medical Leaders two-day event. She plans on becoming a pharmacist. And finally, celebrating our staff. Last week was Public Schools Week. We thank our dedicated teachers and staff for helping our students learn and thrive in MMSD. As we offer our appreciation, we'd like to highlight a couple of examples of instructional excellence. At Lafayette High School's Grad Academy, teachers Jeff Carlson and Andrew Graham inspire and motivate a resilient group of students to reach new heights on their journey to academic excellence. And earlier this month, we recognized National School Counseling Week. Our school counselors go above and beyond to ensure students are ready to graduate for college careers and the community.
Thank you so much, Board Member Saviyan Castro. And now on to the superintendent's announcements and reports. Doctor Jenkins?
Yes, uh, first, we're gonna go with the Jefferson renaming and we have, uh, Principal, uh, here with us this afternoon, Dr. Daphna.
Um, yes.
Board Member Vanderne, I'm gonna ask you to let us speak and then speak in response.
I was just recusing myself.
There's no vote.
Okay.
Are we ready? Okay, good evening Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and Board of Education. The Jefferson Middle School community would like to officially notify Superintendent Jenkins and the Board of Education that we would like the process for renaming Jefferson Middle School to begin. We are not making a specific proposal, but we understand that in accordance with the Board of Ed Policy, sixty-seven hundred, the Board of Education can respond to this request by seeking specific name proposals that fit the criteria and appoint an ad hoc committee composed of school and community members to take up the proposals. Thank you for giving us this public opportunity to allow the community to be part of the renaming through the work of the ad hoc committee. We have been made aware that the ad hoc committee will be appointed by the Board of Education during a special meeting on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, which will include the designation of a chairperson by the Board President. We look forward to experiencing this opportunity with the community in renaming Jefferson Middle School and look forward to your further direction in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Doctor. And next, uh, we have the update in terms of our masking and in terms of where we are. And before I start off, let me just say we do have with us our medical advisors here this evening, so if they could all come on the screen. And we've been meeting, as you know, regularly with our medical advisors and our medical advisory team on Tuesdays. And so tonight, I would like to have our medical advisors speak to it and then at the end of it, I'm gonna give you the recommendation that I have in terms of how we proceed with the masking, uh, based upon the recent, recommendations coming from CDC, what we're looking at at public health, what we're, what we've gotten out of our medical advisory team discussion. So, we, we have with us tonight, uh, Dr. De Mary, Dr. Wall, Dr. Friedrich, and, uh, okay. I think not, and, uh, Dr. Esser is also here with us as well. We're gonna start off, Dr. De Mary, in terms of the recent, um, decision by CDC in terms of removing masking, in particular in some areas, um, you're saying is guidance around that and where we stand here in Madison. If you want to start and then other doctors could chime in as to.
Sure, happy to. Um, yeah, I think there's been, um, you know, it's a moving target, I'll say. First of all, things are moving very quickly and we did expect, uh, a change from the CDC. Um, the first thing I think that's important to, um, understand is the CDC's kind of view on, um, on COVID in the community has changed and their, the perspective is, is now really focusing on two things, number one, preserving hospital capacity and preventing severe disease. And number two, um, protecting those individuals who are more vulnerable to COVID, um, than others. And, um, there's recognition now that, um, you know, COVID is, is widespread and the numbers have been, um, decreasing. To that end, um, that's the basis for the change in recommendations. Um, the recommendations are then now based on community metrics that include three factors. Uh, the rate of community spread of COVID, the amount of hospital capacity, um, and, um, the, um, the degree of, uh, severe illness in the community. And the, the focus on these, um, uh, on these factors and then, uh, and the last, sorry, the last one is number of, uh, hospital beds. And the focus on that is really to, um, to kind of get away from, um, uh, you know, the, the rather large, uh, scale mitigation strategies and focusing and, and allowing communities to, um, uh, individualize their, um, strategies. So that's kind of where we're at, uh, for, uh, you know, currently, and I think the metrics team has, uh, discussed this on a regular basis. And, um, I'll, uh, uh, throw it open to my, uh, colleagues in the, uh, on the, on the, uh, screen as well.
Dr. Wall, um.
Yeah, maybe I can chime in. I think that, uh, as Dr. Jenkins alluded to, we have been talking and meeting every Tuesday for the past couple of years. And last Tuesday, we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, our approach to masks and unmasking. And I think, um, as a group, we felt that the most prudent thing to do was to continue to wear masks until spring break. And then after spring break, allow the kids to come back with their masks for a couple of weeks in order to potentially let anything settle down that may have erupted as a consequence of all of the cross contacts that children would have had during their vacation time. And then if the trends continue downward, as we hope they will, from, uh, the Omicron surge, then we thought that somewhere in the first or second week of April, it would be a good time to discontinue masks. The CDC recommendation came out late on Friday, um, it's a little bit different than what we had talked about. But I feel like it, uh, it's quite prudent for us to pursue our first plan because I think that is a very safe thing to do at this juncture. And although the CDC came out with, uh, with this new plan, there are still a hundred and ten cases occurring every day in Dane County and the overall positivity rate for tests is eleven percent. And both of those numbers are almost certainly underestimates because there's so much home testing being done. And then, of course, that isn't recorded. And so I feel that we're in a good place, that the Omicron surge is relenting and that was all good news and that we should continue to be prudent until after the spring break and reassess, hopefully finding the same good news and then taking masks off. Or at least, I, I don't even mean taking masks off, I mean, leaving it to people's discretion.
Yes, and Dr. Friedrichs, and our recommendations are from the committee or from the medical advisors, we're talking about indoors at this particular point and outdoors as we had discussed, uh, to remove them, is that correct?
Yes.
That, that's right, can, can you guys hear me? Okay, I'm afraid I'm having some trouble with my video.
Yes.
Okay, so, so I would just really quickly, um, add, add a couple of points to, to what Dr. Wald and Dr. De Mary said. So, a- as we stated, the, um, you know, revised CDC guidance is, is pretty heavily revised and came out late on, on Friday, and I think we're still kind of working through, um, understanding what the implications for the, the changes in, in all of these, uh, metrics are. And, and I think that we're broadly in agreement that, that they make sense, as Dr. De Mary said, the, the strategy from a, like, you know, high-level population standpoint now, I think makes sense to, to preserve hospital capacity and make sure that, that as a, you know, that the broad population is not at risk for, um, severe disease or death or, or, you know, um, you know, having difficulty accessing, um, uh, you know, medical care because of a surge of COVID patients. Um, what I have trouble understanding is that, that the seven-day, um, you know, average case count in Dane County is, is still above two hundred, it's, it's declining, um, but it's still above two hundred. And so as I would follow the, the CDC, um, you know, formula, I think we would still be in a, in a median level of risk and not a low level of risk. And, and so I, I think until we, um, have a better understanding of that, um, you know, the, the, the way to apply these formulas and how CDC would like us to do that, um, it makes sense to, to continue our strategies, as we were saying. Um, and I think it's important, as we've heard from, from Mike also, that, that, you know, this is a decision that we'd like to, to have, um, you know, represented as many constituencies in the MMSD community as possible. And so there, there remain people who, um, you know, are immunocompromised or otherwise at, at, at high risk for severe complications should they get COVID. We know that, um, when we remove masks, you know, we're probably going to accept a higher level of risk of transmission within schools. And so the question is, you know, does, does that, do the extra cases that, that may happen, um, are, are those small enough to, to outweigh the, the, um, you know, to, to make it, uh, beneficial to remove masks or to make masks optional indoors. So I hope that made sense.
Dr. De Mary's hands up.
Yeah, I'll just add one more thing in terms of, you know, making change in policy, it's, I think it's more of a question of how quickly than whether or not to remove masks because, um, it, you know, we're headed in that direction, it seems safe. Um, and CDC certainly endorses that. So I, I think it's, um, getting back to Mike's comments, you know, when, um, teachers, when students, um, can feel safe, um, being unmasked and when vulnerable populations can be protected as well.
And I just also wanted to have Nurse Carrie speak to, because on the ground, boots on the ground, she's definitely there with our team and she's a part of the advisory team with this metrics team, so Nurse Carrie.
Thank you. So I just, uh, would like to reiterate our cadence all the way through this pandemic is after the CDC releases guidance, we allow, we give time for DHS and our local public health department to weigh in on the decisions. And then we always take it to our metrics team to have, um, a discussion about how we adopt that and what that will look like in MMSD. And so I think it's important that we continue to follow that cadence as we always have, that, like they said, the CDC guidance just came out on Friday. And I think people are still trying to read it and understand it and try to figure out what that means. But, um, I also think we also need to have discussions around, um, the secondary effects to switching to, um, being potentially unmasked in our indoor spaces. Um, we have several students and staff that might have to continue to mask for different reasons. And that might mean, um, I think we have a significant number of students that have their own serious medical conditions where they will be advised by their medical team to continue to mask. Um, we also have some staff that have medical conditions that will need to mask. And then, um, there's also family members, um, or people in their households where, um, they may continue to mask to help protect, um, their loved one or, um, their household family member. And then, um, in regards to that, where also is with the shortened quarantine and isolation period, there is a time period, if we're gonna allow people and continue the practice of shortened quarantine and isolation, there is a period of time, about five days, um, where people will have to mask if they're coming to school. And so I think, um, we recognize this after we've been meeting about this, that we really need to be planful and mindful about how we roll this out because we really need to make sure we get our messaging right with all of our staff and students so that whatever the reason is that somebody needs to wear a mask, that it, that is a widely accepted and supported practice so that everyone feels safe, um, to be able to make those choices of if they're gonna mask or not mask. So we are pulling together a group of nurses and our cell, um, social emotional learning, um, curriculum experts and putting together lesson plans to make sure that we're, um, guiding this before it actually happens. So we're having those conversations so that if people do need to mask or they aren't going to mask, that it is inclusive and we're not providing further harm to anyone in our, in our district. And so, um, we need the time to be able to do and create some of those lesson plans so that we can get them rolled out. Um, and then I think it would be remiss to forget that we still have some students in our district that have never attended school without a mask and that we, um, need to give them time and be able to get them ready to make the transition. We have a lot of kids with a lot of anxiety around COVID and to do this abruptly would not be in the best interest of all of our students. So, um, I agree that we will, you know, continue to follow the science, but I just ask that we continue to be planful and mindful and thoughtful about all of our decisions as we have all the way through the pandemic, because we've always led, um, and been on the right path for our, our students. So, and then just for an update, kind of where we're at, roughly, I know a lot of people want to know about what's happening in MMSD. We're having, um, we are down to on average about fifteen positive cases per day and under, um, five and under in our staff, um, that's about what we're averaging now, so it's come down quite nicely. Um, but it is not down to pre-Delta levels by any stretch of the means. So, um, we continue to see positive cases and those are the ones that are reported, um, to us. We continue to have about five hundred to six hundred people on our screener dashboard every day that we're following up with. Um, and so it would be remiss to just all, also acknowledge that anytime we're making changes in our masking guidance or any of our COVID update, that this has secondary effects on our nursing staff. And so we need to gear up of how we're gonna implement this, what is the workload and the burden gonna be on our health services staff? Because we have been doing this and not really had a day off in the last two years. And so really being thoughtful and mindful of how we can do this in a way that it really, um, supports everything for not only health services, but our entire community. Thank you.
Board Member Vanderne.
Yes, I'm going to speak half as a board member, half as an, as an autistic adult that's part of the disability community. I'll start with the, uh, the disability part first. Tomorrow is the National Day of Mourning for the Disability Community. For all those who have died over the year for various reasons, the amount of COVID deaths is going to be enormous. What I'm afraid is we are going to suddenly unmask and we will have immunocompromised students who will be in desperate danger. I don't believe we could say that we are a school that helps all students reach col- college community readiness if we're not willing to help all students, and I think by removing the masks too soon, we will not be able to help all students. What I'm afraid of is a decision that would happen overnight instead of weeks. And I thank the doctors for, and Nurse Carrie for stressing that it must happen over weeks. I've already talked to several of the disability community, including these four parents who are, who are looking at other schools because they're, who would require masks, because they're afraid of their child you know, being immunocompromised and still getting COVID. For us, this pandemic isn't over. Additionally, I'm not saying don't trust the CDC, they're excellent, they're scientists, I am not a scientist. But I do worry when you say, when their chief spokesperson does say that you're fine with Om- with Omicron as long as you have four or less comorbidities, when that means half the entire disability population, majority of African-American, Native American populations and a large quarter of the Latino population. So basically, if you're white, then you're fine. That's not science, that's just genetic, so it's terrifying. So I strongly agree with the doctors that we do a phased approach, that we look and not make a decision immediately after spring break, but we look at the numbers within five days after, to so we give people a chance to make that decision. Because yes, I understand, we want our kids to be kids, but there is no going. Because yes, I understand we want our kids to be kids, but there is no going back normal. The world's changed. We can't go back.
Thank you so much for those comments. Board Member Vandermeil and Board Member Gomez Schmidt.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Wild, Dr. De Mary and Dr. Friedrich um, for being with us um, tonight and um, every day that we are together once a week um, to discuss these issues. Um, I guess I am never afraid that we're going to run out of things to talk to at the, I talk about at the asymmetric meetings because it seems like you said, things continue to change. And you know, I think what we've learned in being this in this pandemic is that that is what we are going to have to continue to deal with is changing conditions. Um, and the question is really how how we pivot um, according to that. And you know, recognizing the CDC guidance that just came out, I mean, this is a mindset and a strategy shift um, in the science. And so I think, you know, recognizing that we want to follow the science. Um, and we have to be able to pivot and adapt um, to the guidance and practices as they change. Um, which means CDC, which means Madison, um, um, Public Health Madison Dane County. Um, but I think an important thing as we're making these decisions is for us to be able to explain what we're basing our decision on, right? Um, the decisions about masking or any of our other strategies that we're using. Um, I think if if the science changes, then then we need to figure out how to pivot. Explain why we're not pivoting or what other mitigating factors we are considering um, when we're looking and considering this guidance. And like you said, how we're going to move in a new direction in a phased approach. I I really like um, considering it in a phased approach, um, because I I I don't feel like we can, we can pivot on a dime here. Um, but I I also think that if if we're not, if we continue to say we're following the science and we don't create a phased approach for pivoting here, we are going to lose our credibility. And I've been listening to podcasts and following a lot of media about how there is questioning credibility of public health and science um, when we choose not to follow it too. So um, I I really do appreciate this conversation conversation. And I guess one of my questions is, is, is is the change in the CDC guidance a switch to a recognition in who the mask protects when someone's wearing a mask? Um, is it a switch to saying that masks protect the individual rather than the larger community? I guess I'll ask that to Dr. De Mary, Dr. Wild.
Yeah, I I think so to some extent. This is really moving from a more um, you know, protect the public approach to individual approach, protect the individual and having um, individuals who are at risk than protect themselves. Part of the CDC guidance included the kind of updated versions of masking, making sure the mask is well fitting, using more KN ninety fives and N ninety fives, which do provide a better fit. Those provide better protection to the individual rather than protecting other people. So I think that's a component of these new guidelines as well.
If I could jump in, I would, I would say one thing, and I I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to to drop off the call before too long here, but but um, I I think one thing that's important to say here is that you know, there hasn't been a tremendous shift in the science. There has been like, what has changed for CDC in this recommendation is is a change in kind of how to look at what the goals are. Uh, so what what are the public health goals and and you know, what at a population level, at United States population level should CDC be prioritizing? So there's not necessarily a change in what the science says about how COVID is transmitted and how people should be protected. And so the it it does sort of place more of an emphasis on individual choice. Um, and individual responsibility, as we often hear. Um, than it does on the the collective responsibility to to protect others. And I I think, you know, reasonable people can disagree about uh, the appropriateness of that, but that that actually, in my view, becomes more of a, you know, political and policy question than it becomes a scientific question. So a- as Dr. De Mary just said, I think that um, you know, the the science is now pretty well established that higher quality masks do afford a measure of of protection to the individual that surgical masks and cloth masks do not. So for example, as we consider a phased approach. When there are people in the MMSD community, whether they're students or staff members or or household members who remain at high risk, then you know, one component of risk mitigation has to be, you know, what's the availability of high quality masks that that are comfortable and wearable um, to to people who need that that enhanced level of protection? And how can we get those masks to those people? Um, do people have the protection that they need before we decide to to make masking optional for the broader public? So I think that those constituencies that are most vulnerable really need to be heard from and and making these decisions. And that's part of why we need to make them deliberately and and not quickly.
Okay, thank you very much for speaking to that because it does move it into more of a a policy consideration. And I think we really do need to continue to talk about how the how the changes that are being made and what they mean for how our schools operate. Um, yeah, going forward. So so I appreciate this discussion. I appreciate the conversation that's going to continue. And I'm just going to encourage us to to really move forward and and see how we can um, pivot in a in a phased approach.
Board Member Morelli.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, this has been a lot. So thank you, uh, you all for joining us. You have a couple of questions. Uh, one is and you know, you had shared with us that you are are part of a network of of other medical professionals that are looking at what's happening in particular in the school level. What, some shifts in policies that you are looking at to both uh, protect staff that uh, for medical reasons are not, cannot get vaccinated. Uh, but also protecting students and you already mentioned uh, immune compromised students.
Sure, I can um, partially direct that. I'll just say that um, you know, the ABC Science Collaborative is um, part of our network and uh, we're doing research on um, in in the state of Wisconsin on uh, children with complex medical issues or medical complexity, underlying medical conditions. And I think the um, the message we hear loud and clear from parents uh, when we survey them is uh, they want schools to be able to follow mitigation strategies. Um, they want things um, to be available uh, for their kid to be tested. For instance, uh, testing is a a component of that. Um, they uh, want to feel like the schools are attentive to their needs. That's a a big part of that. Um, you know, as for uh, teachers as well, the emphasis is on vaccination and um, individuals wearing uh, masks as we roll into this um, kind of new era of masks being not not required.
Um, you know, I would just comment that, you know, part of the rationale that permits people to think about not wearing masks is the availability of treatments or oral treatments now for patients who have early COVID. And the availability of some agents that you can take that are preventive if you are an immunocompromised adult. However, I would just say that none of those exist now for children. And children remain unvaccinated. You know, there's a very large portion, we know that all children under five are still vulnerable and many children in the five to eleven year age group likewise are still vulnerable. And those medications, both the preventive as well as the treatment medicines are not yet available for children. So I think that you know, we just, we we need to be cautious. And you know, one of the ways that people are mitigating is again, you know, with masks, which puts the burden on the on the individual, which is okay. Uh, if they can be vaccinated, that's of course, what should happen. And then um, the best mask that they can wear to protect themselves.
A quick follow up to that, and I have one more question. Um, how have uh, uh, how has your network uh, discussed uh, who, how does, how the breakthroughs are happening? Uh, you know, we are, we are a school issue, we're also a place of employment. So it's something different when school, you know, children are together and then catching from each other is something different when our staff is now uh, um, you know, having a breakthrough and then uh, potentially contaminating uh, other students to COVID. And I know this conversation now is just getting, it got really muddy from having a virus that was, you know, spreading so so quickly. But how have you negotiated that from a place of liability?
Sure, I, you know, in mid-January, when Omicron was at its worst. Um, it it became difficult to tell where people were getting COVID, just this thirty, forty percent of of people getting tests were getting, were positive. But as the numbers drop, um, you know, what we know is um, most cases come from the household. Um, so yeah, most kids are getting it from their household contact. That's the most common situation. Um, transmission in schools, what we call secondary transmission um, occurs, but as the numbers get low, that becomes less and less of an effect, um, such that you're seeing um, a ratio of like twenty to one or thirty to one um, cases. So for every twenty or thirty cases of COVID you have, there's one case that gets transmitted to another student or a teacher um, in the school. And that's probably the level we're at right about now. Um, twenty to one or 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 better as the as Omicron drops off, um, those secondary cases become less and less of a, less and less important.
It's really helpful. Um, my last question, um, a tough one. Are we ever going to be able to provide a safe learning environment for our students that um, are not going to be able to get vaccinated? And who is too uncertain of 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 treatments as Dr. Wild mentioned?
I mean, those treatments will eventually be available for children. They just aren't now. And you know, I don't know if we're six months, twelve months or eighteen months away from the time when they will be, but they surely will be.
I I think also it's important to note that as the community level goes down, the risk to those children becomes less and less um, significant, right? Uh, that uh, the parent can make a decision whether or not um, sending their kid to school outweighs the risk of potentially getting COVID. And you know, we're getting to risk levels that are pretty equivalent to influenza right now. Um, and I I think that's another important way to kind of frame this.
Yeah, thank you so much, both. Uh, I, my recommendation to the district is is doubling down our communication, I think. Uh, to to the point of following the science, I I do think that there is a lot of who is actually the science authority we should be following? Uh, and what does it look like at the at the ground level? At the district level, what is it that we're doing? Uh, when we say we're following the science and we are uh, being proactive in some of our measurements. So thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins and 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 the staff. Uh, for for making sure that we're having this conversation. Uh, President Molder.
I want to thank all of our medical advisors for joining us. And I want to turn it back over to Dr. Jenkins for the rest of the superintendent announcements. Um, and I want to thank you all for the metrics meetings. They've been incredibly helpful as things change rapidly over the course of the last two weeks.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I just want to start off by thanking everyone, everyone in our community, because we've been in this now uh, nearly two years and the community has really stepped up in many ways and just followed our lead as we went into this pandemic. No one knew. We thought when we first started this, you could actually rub somebody on the shoulder and you can get COVID-19. We just didn't know. We were ignorant about it. But we've learned a lot uh, since this has first started. And I want to thank all of our uh, families, the children, uh, our scholars, I mean, our kindergartners were the ones who got us back in school, if you remember last March. They were the first ones to go out and we learned a lot of strategies from them in terms of how to do the mitigation. You come up, don't hug. Give them the thumbs up, you know, wink your eyes, you know, give the elbow bump. And kindergarten were the ones who first went in kindergarten and staff. Um, and just everybody, we've done this. And we found that through the mitigation strategies, the mask being a big part of it. We're better off now than what we were. Uh, we have tried uh, to the utmost, this district, this board. Staff, I appreciate Mike Jones coming on and what he said. He's been at every metric meeting along with other staff. And we've been trying to make sure that we keep everyone safe. We've done that. We began to open back up in ways. Uh, we follow the science. We paused opening back up schools and we said we would get back to school on January the tenth, and we're going to stay in school. We did everything we could to make sure, because we know the science has also told us the socio-emotional the mental health piece is daunting for everyone when we close schools. Our aim is not to close schools. Not to have any of our students and our staff to face harm. And CDC coming out. And I know too, they're struggling. Everyone's struggling around the science. And it's a very challenging place to be during these times. Never in uh, our recent history have we seen a pandemic come in and just take control over all aspects of our lives. I appreciate our medical advisors. They are some of the best in the world and I would put them up against anybody. And how sincere they are about this work. How sincere they are about our children and the greater good. I know the CDC may be going to individual. But we in Madison, we always focus on what's good for our community as well. You do what's good for the community, you do what's good for individuals. I appreciate Board Member, Board Member Vandermeil bringing it up. Our students who are disabled, the Black Brown uh, children. All of our children are a part of our community. And we really do know and understand and I feel the parents who have said, you know, they want their masks to come off. What we're saying on the outside, I'm going to be recommending that we do take the advice of our medical advisors, remove the mask outside. The science is also saying that on the outside. And those who don't feel comfortable can be optional for you. But on the inside, I think where we are now taking a phased approach, hearing from CDC are normal cadence. We hear from our state, we hear from our local, then we go back to our medical advisory team, metrics team on Tuesday, which is tomorrow. And we discuss what does this mean? This just happened Friday night. And if anyone can figure it all out in this short time, what a plan should be, wow. Please call us up and get on our team. I think we should continue moving forward with our phased approach. Initially, the initial plan, you heard from Dr. Wall, Dr. De Mary, Dr. Friedrich. And we go with the phased approach. History is on our side. You remember after winter break, right? It was projected that the numbers would go back up. They did. And you saw schools all around us closing. You know, nine schools, seven schools. When we came back on the tenth, we have not closed. We've been closed because it impacts our staff. So I also appreciate Mike's comment about the quarantining and Nurse Carrie, what she said. The strain on our nurses and everyone, this is serious, everybody. This is serious. And we've come this far. Dr. Malaya Jones, I remember she said, hey, hang in there when we were talking about this. We've come this far. Why do we want to rush back to something that's going to cause us to have more harm for ourselves? We can figure this out. We can figure this out. We've pivoted many times. So my recommendation to the board, that we take the recommendations of our medical advisory team. Go through the spring break, come back and have the conversation about our next steps. This would be the responsible thing to do in my best estimation. You know, nuances beyond just the science. That we have to do in terms of running school. You start hearing Nurse Carrie talk about some of it. The wear and tear and just the stress, the socio-emotional piece on our students and our staff. I think we have to take all that into account. So that's my recommendation. I want to be clear. After the spring break, we come back. We have our plan. We have our meeting tomorrow and we'll talk about other nuances of this uh, impact of the CDC's recommendation. But that's where I am right now this month. Thank you. Thank you. Now, I was so fired up about that one. We've waited since Friday night. Uh, so the next day, we're going to get into again, being intentional um, about socio-emotional, mental health of our students. Even though I am one who wished that we did not have all this assessment in our society. Uh, too much assessment, too much of anything is too much. But the reality, this is the world in which we live. So we want to be intentional in terms of mitigating the learning laws and the confidence of our students by offering ACT prep. And you heard from some of our students, I can't say much more, uh, than what they said earlier. So I'm going to have Ms. Green, who's been championing this for us in terms of making sure that we're organized. We have champions at each school to support our students throughout, uh, the preparation. So Ms. Green, at this time, could you come on?
Sure, good. Good evening, everyone, again. Um, thank you. I'm going to make this quick because I think the best part of what we had to share with you tonight already happened through, uh, our four students that spoke. So, uh, can you hear me okay? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, yeah, and I wish that our students, uh, had an opportunity to engage in conversation with you. So we'll have to figure out another time when they don't have to get to class, uh, to make that happen. Barb, could you, uh, move forward with the slides, please? And could you move forward again, please? Um, just one thing that I want to highlight on this slide is, first of all, we know as everyone is navigating these pandemics. We just had a, a large conversation around that. Um, one of the things that we felt was important that I've stated before was how can we reduce stress? How can we reduce anxiety? And how can we support and, um, uh, try and close gaps from the learning loss our students have? Um, and one of those strategies, and I've said this before, it is a singular strategy. But one of those strategies that we thought was very important, especially for our juniors, um, as they were coming back into school and had not been in school for quite some time, was creating this, um, uh, ACT prep opportunity for them. Um, and I think our students said it the best tonight when they said, um, Kiam said it was like an abyss to him, not knowing, uh, what the ACT was. So this prep course has given him an insight into what to expect. Um, I've talked about these bullets on this slide before, but the one that I just want to highlight that I, um, think is really important for us to remember is, um, many of our students, up to fifty percent of our students that go to post-secondary immediate after graduation, attend Madison College. And while Madison College in itself does not require the ACT, uh, for entrance, Madison College does look at ACT scores when it comes to students, uh, taking courses that what we call are non-credit bearing courses and being able to bypass those courses in order to get into either their courses for the liberal arts transfer program or one of ten of their, uh, programs that they have there. And students need a certain ACT score to bypass that, or they take the Accuplacer. Accuplacer being aligned to the SAT and/or, um, the ACT scores. Uh, when students aren't able to bypass those courses, they still have to pay for these courses and they are not transferable. So it's non-credit bearing, but costly for our students. And so just an added benefit of students doing better on the ACT is it is really a cost saving when we even think about our students that are attending Madison College. Well, not for entrance, but really important for their trajectory at their post-secondary institution. Barb, could you go to the next slide, please? So a few things that, um, don't do a great job, um, that the students already said is just, uh, some of the things that we think about, uh, when we think about, uh, students' social emotional well-being and, uh, how to reduce anxiety, uh, when it comes to, uh, the, these large, um, high stakes exams that they have to take. Uh, we know that some of the, uh, contributions to test anxiety are feeling that students aren't prepared, maybe not understanding what's on the test, thinking it's an abyss, as, uh, Kiam said. Um, and, uh, some of the, just the understanding of the test structure itself. And so a few of the things that, um, our students are getting through their course are the direct experience of the testing format and understanding, uh, length of it, uh, the test and what they will expect on March eighth, which is next week. Um, some of the conditions that they have to think about, um, some strategies to help them with the, the actual test itself or preparation for the test. And then they're also building this community. We've heard from a lot of students, uh, not only, uh, the connections they've made with other students across the schools, because all six of our high schools are in, uh, similar spaces together, but the, the community that they're building with their instructors and also as, uh, Dr. Jenkins mentioned, with their champions. Every one of these students has an adult that is their champion that checks in with them, that makes sure they have what they need. And so we're really trying to cultivate a community as well as they're about to go into this exam on the eighth. Could you go to the next slide, Barb? This was our wonderful students that we heard from earlier. Um, uh, a reminder, they were from La Follette West, uh, East High School and the Early College STEM Academy. You can go to the next slide, Barb. I'll just pause for a second. Here's just a few more quotes of things that I've received, uh, since, uh, our students have signed up, both from our students and from their families. Could you go to the last slide for me, Barb? And what you have here isn't about the, uh, a, anxiety reducers that, uh, the test prep has provided or what we heard from our students. But I just wanted to give you a glimpse into, uh, our plans for moving forward. We were here in January where we talked about, um, the ACT as one of our strategies. And I promised to bring back both, uh, how we want to look at the review of the ACT as well as the timeline. So you'll see here a little bit of the timeline of what we're thinking about for this work moving forward. Uh, we will go into another opportunity, mid-March through end of May is our recommendation. And then recommending that we, uh, run some of these courses over the summer and then again in the fall. And throughout this entire process, we're collecting feedback and data to, uh, continuously reflect and adjust and refine our work moving forward. Could you go to the next slide, Barb? I think it's just the end, yes. Uh, so that was real quick, but I wanted to just, uh, go through a few things, um, knowing that you heard the best part way at the beginning of the session. Hopefully you remember our student voices, uh, during the midst of, uh, the speakers as well. So let me pause and let me turn it back to, uh, Dr. Jenkins first, or to see if there's any questions before we move on.
Ms. Green, thank you so much. And like I said, comments from our, uh, scholars was outstanding. But one of the other things, when she mentioned the students wouldn't have to take media courses, I look at that as a debt reduction, debt reduction opportunity. I really do believe we need to find as many ways, everyone needs to find as many ways to go through their, uh, collegiate experience coming out of debt. We know that the research tells us that, particularly children, uh, from certain families backgrounds comes out more in debt. Uh, a lot of times because you don't get the reimbursement for the media courses and other things alike. But that's one of the things. But the other things, this is one of our strategies, coupled with what we do already for our Avid students, uh, in expanding those opportunities for other students. I think that that would also, uh, not think, I know that would help reduce the anxieties that many of our students may have. We couple those two strategies that are both best practices, preparing for this and looking at the way that Avid helps our students approach moving through, uh, high school and prepare themselves for the next level, uh, post-secondary. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sydney Green. Moving forward, we have reports on items that proceed through the instruction work group held on February seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Yes. Thank you. Um, so we have received a presentation, uh, from the Early Literacy and Beyond Task Force, um, in partnership with the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Um, that task force was charged with last year reviewing and, uh, becoming familiar with the best practices. And to have the best advice about the most effective ways to teach literacy for 4K through, um, through senior year. And then identify how literacy is taught across the district. Um, examples and bring the examples of how literacy is being taught at the university, or examined, sorry. How, uh, literacy is being taught at the university and then making recommendations to the school district. Um, I encourage folks, uh, that would like to know more about this, uh, to look at the presentation. It is attached as well to, um, our docs. And then we also had an update for 4K, um, which included enrollment, the expansion of our 4K program, all-day, four-day program to twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then the next steps for the program as a whole. Um, again, that presentation is also, um, linked in board docs as well, if you'd like to review that. And we have some possible agenda items that may be coming through, just our general wellness check as every month we have. And then curriculum adoption discussion, as well as the academic plan updates.
Thank you so much, Board Member Pearson. Uh, reports and items that proceeded through the operation work group held on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Member Cruz.
Thank you. So, um, on February fourteenth, we continued our work on informing and developing the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three MMSD budget. Um, we specifically focused on staffing in this month's conversation. We also talked about summer school and, um, some plans for, um, SR three funding. Um, in addition to that, we got an update on referendum projects. And there are some consent agenda items tonight related to the referendum. And, um, we got an update from our human resources department. We will next meet on March fourteenth and our primary agenda item is to continue our budget development work. I'm talking about healthcare benefits, um, equity projects for the district and any early budget approvals, as well as continuing to discuss summer school.
Thank you so much, Board Member Cruz. I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions set forth in section ten of the electronic agenda prepared for the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two regular school board meeting. Exactly said motion as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her or their affirmative vote on motions consolidated hereby subject to any express actions that have been made by any member of the school board. Any suggestions? Board Member Cruz.
Ten point nine, ten point ten, ten point twenty-four, ten point twenty-five.
Ten point nine, ten point ten, ten point twenty-four and ten point twenty-four.
Yes.
Board Member Morley.
Ten point six, ten point fourteen, ten point fifteen.
I don't have it in front of me. Is any on the Jefferson Committee renaming?
No. Thank you for asking, Board Member Vandermeulen. And Board Member Morley, I want to make sure I've got you. Ten point six, ten point fifteen and ten point.
Fourteen.
Thank you. All right. All those, Board Member Gomer Schmidt.
I'm ten point eleven.
Are there any left? All right, y'all. Vote I.
I. I.
Motion Carrie, seven. All right, we will start out with point six. And discuss. I move that the Board of Education do an increase in funding for purple services by a total of thirty-six thousand five hundred to be used to provide hearing impaired and cover our services due to the vacancy of a hearing impaired observer on the student service audible and non-audible public lines. So moved. New discussion? Board Member Morley.
Yeah, thank you so much, President Modra. I'm, I'm very much in support of this, um, line item. I was just hoping to hear from one of the staff, uh, around, uh, how, how are they looking at the diversity of the staff of the, uh, of purple communications?
Board Member Morley, are you directing the question at each of us?
I'm not sure who, uh, I think it's Nancy that, Nancy Muffender.
Contract compliance. Yeah, so that is Kelly Cook and she's probably not at this meeting. She's an attorney in her legal affairs.
Okay.
We could get something to you.
I think Carrie, I think Carrie is here.
So, um, if you look in the board documents, there's generally a contract compliance memo. And that memo indicates for each particular vendor where they are with regard to their diversity efforts. Um, we do require that all vendors, um, complete that form. Where, you know, required by board policy. And where vendors don't complete that form, we have, um, instituted a process whereby they get an opportunity to do it. Um, we explain why, and then if they continue to refuse, we tell them that we will have to select another vendor.
Thank you so much.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion Carrie, seven off. All right. And nine. I move that the Board of Education improve an expenditure in the amount of one hundred three thousand four hundred for the purchase of the Cambridge ACT prep course for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year using the twenty-one, twenty twenty-two secondary programs operating budget. Let me discuss it for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Board Member Cruz.
Thank you. Um, before we move forward with this vote, I have a few questions. Uh, my first one is I'm curious why we're doing ACT test prep for ninth and tenth graders?
Sydney, if you have, you have your questions.
Sydney.
Sure, I will be happy to answer that. Uh, hi, everyone, again. Um, Chris, we are opening it up for students in younger grades in the event that they are interested in getting a head start. Again, we believe the ACT prep isn't just about gearing up for the specific test on that date, but also preparing them for exams in general and also, um, as we have stated, for academic skills. So we wanted to widen the net and make sure that students are not just directly taking the exam. We also know that some students, uh, like to get a head start on taking it, um, uh, on their own. So there is a test in June. And so if students are doing, um, an early test or wanted to, uh, take it at that point, we wanted to make sure they had this preparation opportunity. Um, so, so that is, uh, the rationale for opening it up through nine through twelve. It's four hundred spots. So, yeah, let me just pause there.
Right, my next question is, um, because this is geared towards the June ACT and MMSD doesn't, or, you know, the June ACT is not provided to our students free of cost, they have to pay for it. So are we going to be helping out students who are experiencing poverty and paying for the June ACT if they take this class and can't afford to take it?
Yes, that's our, we, we, we have to answer it. We also look at, thank you so much, Sydney, for responding to that. But this is also mitigation, the laws that we're talking about and how we're going to be using some of the SRS to support that. But most definitely that does carry a, uh, right off the bat in terms of students can't afford that. And we've been able to pay for it through other means over the years, I have with other funds. Right now, we could use our S dollars to be able to support, thank you, pointing that out.
And then my third question is, we've got our class happening right now. I, I assume it's getting close to wrapping up as the ACT is coming up in March. Um, can someone say something about the, the demographics of the students who ended up signing up for the class? As well as how many students did we fill all two hundred spots?
Oh, yes, most definitely, uh, we have that, those demographics. Ms. Green, if you could speak to that.
Sure, I, I don't, yeah, yeah, absolutely. We had more than two hundred students that were interested in, yes, we filled all two hundred spots. I can, uh, get to the actual numbers, but we had an over-representation of students of color. If I remember correctly, we had about forty students that identified as white. And we had about fifty-five students that identified as African-American and about fifty that identified as Hispanic. But again, those are rough, uh, remembrance of the numbers, but I do have the actual demographics of that. And you'll receive that at a later date. I think you saw in the weekly updates that we're going to, um, provide some more information on this cohort, both qualitative and quantitative data when it's done. Um, but, um, if you want me to pull it up, I can also pull it up right now because I do have it in a document. But that's a, a, a rough estimate of the, and, and predominantly students were identified as coming from low-income backgrounds.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
And special needs students were also included.
Correct, thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins, yes. Correct. Thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins, yes.
Students receiving services.
So. Your questions, Board Member Pearson and Gordon, I see you're in.
Yeah, so I was just gonna ask a question about, are we gonna, it's along the lines of Chris's question, just about how many students actually utilize it, the targeted demographic. But then how are we gonna ensure that that targeted demographic is still represented in the summer? And how are we gonna include that? Because I know that summer is usually the time where, you know, students are having their break, you know, so how are we being intentional about ensuring that they can get there? Because they're not, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna have school, so they're not already gonna have access in certain ways, so, yeah.
This, this is a part of our addressing some of our historically disenfranchised populations. Students will be very intentional, and even the students who are taking it now, we're asking them to spread the word, you know, it's their friend group. But our whole goal is to make sure our most underserved students are having this opportunity, as well as all other students that are having this opportunity, because they've experienced what they have during this last two years. So that's a great question, but we're definitely doing that. In the Office of Engagement, we'll also be working with us in terms of intentionally working out, reaching out to families, and we've already been in contact with some pastors and some other individuals in our community about this, and they're on board supporting.
Yeah, I would just add one thing to answer your question, Maya, everything that Dr. Jenkins said, and for summer specifically, we thought about two approaches, one, running it in the schools where we're offering summer school, and also running it in some of our community sites. We wanted to put some of them in the community where we felt students are already more deeply connected. So those are the conversations we're having for summer, both kind of in the school, there'll be a virtual session, and then also it's a few of our community centers.
It includes the urban league and also churches.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, because that was gonna actually be my next comment, was that we need to be looking at how we can utilize community centers and the community partners that we do have to kind of help expand that. And then I just would just say, as I constantly mention all the time, is that we should continue looking at ways and use some of our SR dollars to start training our own staff to do these, and move away from paying big corporations in the ACT growths who continue administering this. So finding ways that we continue to invest in our own. So hopefully that will be part of this movement in the summer as well.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Jenkins. I was gonna say, we have a few staff that are participating right now in the class as learners. And then for this next round that's coming, March through May, we have staff that will also be part of it for the physical location, so the, the four comprehensive high schools. And then we're also looking for our staff in the summertime. So I, we heard that loud and clear in January, and we definitely want to make sure we're building our own internal capacity so that we can do that moving forward. So that is definitely part of the plan that we have.
Thank you.
Morgan?
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to say, Ms. Green, having it, you know, at community centers, as well as, you know, at the issue of the schools during the summer, it's like a really great idea. Like you said, that could, you know, drastically increase everyone's access to these programs, especially those for unrepresented communities. So, you know, thank you again for that. And also having it at the Urban League, Dr. Jenkins, I was thinking that's a good idea, because, you know, the Urban League is like a big community center for a lot of people that I know. So going into my question, how, so I see that this prep, the enterprise was, you know, the least expensive. Can you also, like, tell me, like, why else was this vendor chose over the other ones?
Yeah, absolutely. Besides cost, and we know cost isn't always what drives everything. I think their flexibility that they have been able to provide, as well as they are embedding social emotional supports for us that we have requested. When we talked about this at the end of January, when we brought the other consent forward, I heard that, I think from Chris, Board Member Karusi, or maybe it was President Modro, anyways, one of them brought that up. And so we took that back to the vendor and asked for that, and they've been intentional about, they also have an onsite social worker, and their social worker has been providing some additional supports for that. In addition to that, they're providing opportunities for students to have additional sessions if they want beyond the kind of large class, so more tutoring opportunities. So we felt like the supports that they were providing and their flexibility really was working well for us in terms of what we were trying to accommodate. They were also flexible in terms of how we shifted to both having a face-to-face option and a virtual option going into March, and so that was one of the other reasons.
Yes, that's brilliant. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the other things I would like to offer, we have a local vendor partner, I should say, that offered to do some work was pro bono, and that's Zach Gallin, who's gonna be a small group supporting in the screen. I don't know. You mentioned that earlier.
No, I did not, but yes, that, and doing more targeted, he does work over at Lusher Center, is where we're working with some students, and definitely doing some pro bono for us. The other thing that I would just add that, I think you might have read in the memo, but I want to mention, we heard that the sixteen hour felt like rushed and not enough time, so we've also stretched that out. And this next round will be twenty-four hours. And then, as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, the work that's going to be happening pro bono is even extended. He's offered to do it up to six months and or beyond for students to do a real targeted approach. So we're, we're really pleased with these components that we have to support our students going forward.
That's just another targeted approach for underserved students who have within his group.
Can I ask our students receiving academic credit for taking this course?
Yes, Ali, they definitely are. They will get elective credit for it, yes.
Will they be getting a half credit or point? What do you think?
So for this first round, the sixteen hours, they're only gonna be able to get a point two five, and then moving forward, they'll be able to get a point five Carnegie credit.
Thank you so much for speaking to that. Board Member Gomis Smith?
Yeah, hopefully my question is really quick. Just as we're building out and expanding a preparation program and giving access to different grade levels of students, will the students in ninth grade be doing something different than the students in eleventh grade? I mean, when you get to eleventh grade, you're really prepping specifically for the test, like, earlier grades. I think it's, it can be more about testing strategy and content and things like that. Is, is there a differentiation in the approach?
In the summertime, there is going to be. So in the summertime, for our rising ninth graders and rising tenth graders, we're focusing more on kind of the critical reading and writing, a little bit of the pre-work that happens before going into the more targeted, intentional ACT prep. So in the summertime, yes. For this spring session, that is the twenty-four hour session, no, it is going to be differentiated, maybe based on their diagnostic that they take, but not differentiated in terms of content, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Five to. Good, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure in the amount of ninety-six thousand with Avid Center for the twenty-twenty-two Avid Summer Institute Professional Development using the twenty-twenty-twenty-one Avid Districtwide Professional Service and Employee Travel Budget. Second. Any discussion? Board Member Karusi?
So I pulled this one. I want to start by saying that I very much support professional development for Avid, as well as the Avid program. That said, this is very expensive professional development. I think it comes to twenty-four hundred dollars per participant. And I'm just curious why we are doing this in June, when the classes being offered, it's offered in several places, but it's on, I think, Seattle and Orlando. And there's a July course being offered in Minneapolis that could cut our travel costs, and I'm just wondering why we chose to do this at a time when the travel costs might be higher.
This green, you want to respond to that?
Sure. Hi, everyone again. Yeah, Chris, thank you for that question. There's a few reasons why we chose this. There are two sessions, you are correct, for this particular focus area, which is the leadership strand that we are attending. It was San Diego or Orlando. They both fill up quickly. And so we chose San Diego for no other reason than it was between those two. This is for our principals, this is for our schools that are demonstration sites, and all of our coordinators, as well as we are sending a group of central office leaders to attend as well. This is only, for this particular session, it's only in person. We are having other sessions throughout the summer that our teams will go to, which is called the Digital XP, which is a virtual that will be more for like the elective teacher opportunities. And then we are hoping to bring in some strands locally for our kind of district strategies that we're focusing on for next year. But this was a leadership strand specifically, where we were trying to bring our principals together, our central office, our demo sites, and our coordinators together to really work together around where we're going with Avid. In June is because that's when it is offered also.
Any discussion? Sergeant Morley?
As a, as an educator that offers professional learning across, for educators across the state of Wisconsin, I don't find this budget to be outside of the parameters, in particular, given that it is a leadership program. I think the important question is, how sending our staff to this is going to change adult practice. Cindy, if you can speak to that, I'd be great.
Yes, absolutely. So I think we are really excited about continuing to grow Avid, both at our schools. We've grown some sections at the high school and continue to kind of build fidelity at our middle schools. And we also, which you will see next week when we bring a glimpse into it, we're really trying to uplift Avid as a universal practice across all of our classrooms, to support the work of early literacy and beyond specifically. There are some research-based practices that Avid focuses on. One is critical reading strategies. We also know that it works here in Madison with our students. And so our hope with this leadership strand is to bring our people together to, to think about where we want to go, both at the central system, as well as collectively at the school system. And then we really want to try and focus on how that's going to live across the SIPs as well. In addition to what you're talking about, Ananda, about changing teacher practice, if we can create kind of the plan with that group together, then we want to figure out what that means for what happens at Welcome Back and Into Next Year through those other opportunities that I mentioned, where it'll touch more teachers.
Thank you so much for speaking to that. I'm really excited that we continue to expand and provide more learning opportunities for educators around Avid.
Me too. I can't wait. I'll give you an update.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven oh. I moved that the Board of Education.
Ali. You didn't get mine. That was a post.
Oh, sorry, Nikki, I really didn't see you. So you're opposed to the Avid one?
Yes.
So all in favor? Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion carries six one. My apologies, Nikki.
No problem. It's hard because I'm the alone virtual.
I moved that the Board of Education approve an award to CDWG in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred for a comprehensive security assessment with funding from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Technical Services Division budget.
Second.
Any discussion? One member.
I'm sorry, which one are we on?
We are on fourteen.
Let's get ten eleven.
Eleven wasn't that one?
It was the data. We can go back to it.
Okay, ten fourteen. Thank you.
One member Morley. Yeah, thank you so much, President Modro. I'm full supporter of this item, so thank you so much for bringing this to our attention and for making sure that we continue to, to invest in security for, for our data. Did you see your camera is on? So I'm assuming you're gonna speak to this. How are we, how is this investment going to guarantee that we are, that we're getting closer to at least, as close as we can to a foolproof system that, you know, that we guarantee no hacks and guarantee no leaks?
Well, first and foremost, I don't think that I can ever make that guarantee that we will have a, ever have a full proof system. But what this will allow us to do is recognize what vulnerabilities we do have as a district that we are just not aware of. So this assessment will do what we call a penetration test, just as if it was a hacker of some sort that, to allow us to be able to go in and be more proactive to correct any areas of vulnerabilities. So that's what we're trying to do, just trying to make sure that we're trying to stay ahead of the game.
Thank you so much for speaking to that. I think the confidence to our families around their student data is, you know, a top priority for our district, so I appreciate you making sure that we do the tasks as series. I will have to say, I failed the whatever email spam earlier today. I'm really sorry. I'll do better.
Your name will be on my list in the morning.
I, I failed it as well.
I didn't know this one. I thought you W.
I really wanted to see that greeting card. I'm like, somebody send me a greeting card. I'm sorry. I was like, I clicked it.
It's fishing.
Yeah. All those in favor? I. All right, motion carries seven. I moved that the Board of Education approve and commit to a data final agreement between MMSD and UW-Green Bay's Consortium of Applied Research, UW-GV-CAR, from nine seven twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I just had a quick question on this for Janet, and it was about, up until this point, we've been using the Madison Out-of-School Time Information System, and just wondering if, if we are still gonna be using that and adding this in addition, and if, and if not, if, if the data that we've been collecting, you know, for the last two years, sort of transfers into the new system.
Yeah, Chris, thank you for that question. We are gonna continue with the most MIS system, so that we have that data over time.
Okay, thank you. And then this just expands our ability and our capacity, giving us more information.
Yeah, there's new information that they're asking for with this new data sharing agreement that's required now by the federal government.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can the board get a copy of the data sharing agreement?
I did include it with the, with the consent memo.
Was it there, Chris? I can put it in.
Can you put it in there? That would be awesome. Thank you.
All those in favor? All right, we are at ten fifteen, food and nutrition. I moved that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a new tray line from plastics in the amount of three hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred eighteen forty-eight cents using FY twenty-two Food and Nutrition Operating Budget.
Second, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki. Any discussion? One member Morley.
Thank you, President Modro, and Cedric, I see you already turned your camera on. I'm, I'm curious if you can speak to this item. It's a, it's a large item. And also focusing on our alignment. Uh, and also, uh, focusing on our alignment of our purchases and our contracts with, uh, environmentally friendly, uh, or sustainable, uh, uh, contracts.
Yeah, yeah, great question, uh, Board Member Morelli. Um, for this particular consent, um, what you see is a request. Um, the DPI, um, funded us through a grant to support, um, the safe transportation of food. Um, this grant was, um, inherited into our original budget right now. Um, the, the goal here is to put a new production line. Um, unfortunately or fortunately, our current line is about thirty years old and it simply can't sustain. Currently, we're doing close to, um, fourteen thousand meals a day, averaging about thirty-three meals per minute. This new production line will allow us to do closer to a hundred entrees, um, per minute and about forty-two thousand meals. Um, in the climate that we in now, this is a, this is critical for us. Um, you talk about from a sustainability level, we want to be able to get to the point where we can begin to recycle more. Um, the, 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 the recycle, um, uh, program Nichelle is working on as well. Also having Nichelle online that can speak more to the urgency around this, um, this particular line. Keep in mind that this is the heart of our operation. Um, if this production line goes down, just like today it went down, um, it severely hinders our ability to get food in a, in a, in a, in a safe COVID manner. Nichelle, if you want to speak to the production line, I appreciate it.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me on the call today. Um, yes, thank you, Cedric. These, the assembly line that we have right now, like Cedric said, is about thirty years old. Um, we have been experiencing high levels of, um, dysfunction when it comes to, um, producing meals on a regular basis. Due to COVID, it has caused us to pull back and repackage everything. So everything that used to go with the salad bars, the bulk lettuce, the fruit, we had to pull back and actually run everything off the assembly line, which causes the machine to have to do more, um, when it comes to produce more meals, right? Everything goes packaged through the assembly line. So at this point right now, like today, for instance, did machines just shut down? It broke down to a point where we are assessing meals for the next day production. So at this point right now, uh, this machine will allow us to produce more meals at a rapid rate. Um, I am working with Sustain Day on, uh, as far as, you know, the recycling of our, uh, containers that we, that we have right now on hand that will be utilized for the new machine. So that's really great that we're able to transfer the product or the, uh, plastic containers that we're using now onto this new, uh, production line, on the tray line. So, uh, it's a needed, essential thing that we need for food service in order to produce these meals at a efficient rate, uh, and productively at this point.
Thank you so much, Nichelle, for speaking to that. Thank you, Cedric.
He will.
All those in favor? Motion carry seven oh. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the guaranteed maximum price resulting in construction management contract amendment for the referendum twenty twenty West High School project scope in the amount of sixty-four million eight hundred thousand six, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred one, funded by the referendum twenty twenty construction services budget. By approving this consent item, the Board of Education also agrees that an additional one hundred thousand used from million, I'm sorry, one million. Yes. And use from the building service maintenance budget to cover the additional cost of a right arising of any these material costs, verified scope in the project unforeseen in the initial design of the project. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Cruzy.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hodo or somebody else from your team? I'm wondering if you can clarify the additional million dollars and, um, where that funding is going to come from and is that going to come back to the board for a separate approval? And just kind of some process clarification here.
Yeah, yeah, excellent question, Board Member Cruzy. Um, this could be kind of confusing if somebody doesn't explain to you. Uh, I do have my team on here, Anne Zortz, um, from Fendorf, as well as, uh, Sevettlin and Alyssa. And if you want to take the initial question, right, class, and we'll try to recap in a more concise manner for you.
Sure. So I believe the question is if you approve the question with the a million dollars on that, will that come back to the board? Is that the first part of the question?
Yeah, I, the first part is the process and the second part is where is that additional million dollars coming from? Because the consent memo doesn't specify that, as far as I could tell, I may have missed, but.
Sure, I can, um, provide an answer to the first part. I would defer to the building services folks or the accounting folks on the, uh, second portion. Um, so the, the intent here was, um, to provide a, a base scope that's as close to the referendum as we can, given the conditions, um, that we have been dealing with. And, and I would notice we've worked with building services. The budget is very important to us. And so as we've gone through this process, we have worked to provide options to get all the way back to the budget, um, given the inflation and the current market conditions we're dealing with. Um, but the discussions with building services have really revolved around how do we provide the best value for this, uh, generational opportunity, um, for these high schools? And so that has brought forward the request, um, for the approval of the contract amount, um, but also the additional million dollars, um, coming from building services that would help facilitate, um, providing the best solution for the staff, students and community.
So the additional millions coming out of just the general building services budget and not the referendum budget?
Yeah, correct.
That answer. We have worked in close collaboration with our accounting and, uh, we are ready to, uh, have those funds out of our, uh, building services maintenance budgets, uh, that will, uh, help us, uh, be successful with that project.
You voting on that extra million dollars separately or is that part of this vote right now?
That will be part of this vote here. Uh, Board Member Cruzy, let me, let me kind of tie in a little bit more just from a clarity standpoint. If you look closely at it, um, the original scope came in severely over budget here with, with Wes High. Um, we valued engineered almost two point three million dollars down without compromising the integrity of our integrity of the process. When we looked at the inflation amount of close to two point nine million, we simply couldn't absorb that in the, in, in our fund and or, um, uh, maneuvered around. Um, unfortunately, the market conditions, cost of materials, et cetera, um, uh, came in at about two point nine million. What we've done is the extra million that you see will be absorbed by the food service budget. Part of, excuse me, will be absorbed by the referendum budget. Part of the reason why is unfortunately, or unfortunately, we only have a fixed amount of money that goes toward the referendum. We can't exceed that amount. And so what we're trying to do is save on the backside. Anything that we can take care of that we can see that was in scope but over budget, we're trying to absorb as best as quality, uh, best as, uh, as we can. Simply put, we did not want to compromise the project. There are some things that we had to make some tough decisions on and, um, we kept true to this. We did the best we could to find all avenues to reduce costs. And unfortunately, um, as a collective team, we made the decision that it's, it's in scope, but it was simply over budget. And so that we will absorb internally.
Thanks. I think about, some of my confusion just stems from how the memo is written because the, the million dollars is written as, um, something that'll be in future consent. But then later it says that, um, we're agreeing to approve that in future consent. So I'm, I'm just, will it come to us for a vote again? But we've already agreed that we will vote yes, like, um, it's just perplexing to me, so.
Yeah, it could be, it could, it could be confusing, but we, we wanted to just alert the board that, that we, we as building services will, uh, absorb that piece. So i- in this consent here from Fendorf's standpoint, as they move through, they simply need to know, uh, okay, are we able to proceed where the funding will go? Uh, we can work through it with Ross as well. But bottom line is that million would not be absorbed in the referendum. That's the point here.
Thank you. President, what's the question? One member, Thomas Smith?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, looking, uh, at that table on page two of, of the memo, um, it says we're going to need the future funding of a million. It says the additional funding needed above that is two point nine million. Are you telling me that we, you figured out how to, how to close that gap and all we need additionally is one million? Is that correct?
No. So what we're, what we're absorbed is the two point nine million that you see. Um, we've worked closely with our county team. Um, building services simply can't, can't afford to, to absorb two point nine million. That is directly related to inflation. We wanted to capture that separately so you can see some of the, the real challenges that were up against. So that two point nine is part of the referendum. So we were, we're, we're over total three point nine million at Wes. And, and the reality of it is Wes is our largest project with the most material. It's not Wes fault. It's just that for sheer volume of materials needed in the scope of work at Wes, um, three point nine is where we started off at. Two point nine, we attributed directly to inflation and things that we couldn't just simply overcome, unforeseen cost. Um, the extra million could be considered items that we needed. Um, it's in scope. It just was over budget. And so we wanted to find a landing spot for that without compromising the back, uh, the backside, um, on referendum cost. We only have three, three hundred, I think sixteen million to deal with totally. And so we're very cautious of, of the total amount that's being allocated.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we're not trying to find two point nine million in addition. So I think you clarified that. Thank you.
No, I think the confusion.
Board Member Vandermeulen, I'm going to let Dr. Jacob speak to Chris Komet's next question and then, uh, job to you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hodo has, as we had discussed, and I think getting, not translating for Board Member Cruzy, but in terms of the question, is the million dollars, because we get all the fact of the inflation cost, we've talked about that you and I material in Wes. But is the recommendation for this vote, for the million dollars to be a part of this vote at this time? And that's just, you know, yes, I know, because otherwise, will they see it again? And I get it, looking at the memo now, that's confusing. But we'll have to come back for another consent and that's yes or no. So the first part of her question was just straight, will they, will a vote night, tonight, on this first item include the million dollars?
Well, I think I'm going to have to, to, to get in here a little bit. So I, I work with people to create this consent agenda. I wrote the specific item, um, did have a separate memo and a separate consent item just for the million dollars. And Ross recommended that we combine them together because it wasn't really necessary to have two separate things. That's all. The memo didn't get updated to where it should have been probably, but the action that you're taking here includes a million dollars.
That's it.
That's what happened.
That's what we're saying. Yes.
That was happened again in the other one as well.
And that's what I figured from the conversation. So I just wanted to get it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's incredibly helpful. That was so helpful. You could have spent a lot of time there. All right, Board Member Vandermeulen.
Yes, I also think we could save a lot of time if we quit putting multi-million dollar projects on the consent agenda and instead put them on the actual operating schedule because it doesn't get the transparency it needs, one, and two, the memos get confusing when we combine them. That's just a suggestion.
Nikki, I want to, uh, you know, be aware of that suggestion that I do think when we start talking about our overall process in terms of procurement and our consent agenda, we're off, uh, we're, we're off in terms of what we've noticed.
Understood.
Were there discussion? All those in favor? Nanda, I missed it all.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six ones. I move that the Board of Education approve the guaranteed maximum price and resulting construction manager contract amendment for the referendum twenty twenty East High School project scope in the amount of sixty million four hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixteen funded by the referendum twenty twenty construction services budget by approving this consent item. The Board of Education also agrees that an additional five hundred thousand from building services maintenance budget be approved to cover the additional cost of arising from increased material costs, verified scopes in the project unforeseen in the initial design of the project. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Or remember Cruzy?
So I had the exact same questions on this memo and I'm assuming the answers are the same. So if that's true, I don't see any need to go into a lot of discussion on this.
Thank you so much.
Yes, that's true.
Well, thank you, Cedric, for confirming that. So you are saying that the same sort of process aligns between these two motions?
Yeah, the same scenario applies here. Absolutely. We had it in the original two consent formats, but we thought that that would be confusing, so we tried to combine it to one. But thanks, Barbara, for, uh, sharing that with the board.
All right, that's really helpful. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We are done with the consent agenda. City of Madison Education Committee?
Thank you so much, President Morello. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, this, earlier this month, we, um, were able to, thank you to Dr. McGregory, received a, a really comprehensive update on twenty twenty-two MSD COVID response. We were also able to have a robust conversation around, uh, supports from the city and our continued collaboration. We were also able to look at, uh, the recommended big idea projects that are aligned with the committee's priority. And we also had a discussion on our name change and structured in membership. Uh, for our next, uh, meeting, which will happen March ninth, we had a, a, a really critical conversation. The committee, the committee is going to continue to discuss the sustainability of the committee and how can the committee best serve our district? In particular, in a time that the district is not just responsible for educating our children, but provide multiple interventions from mental health to homelessness, uh, meals, vaccines, COVID tests and so on. The committee discussed the critical importance of the role, uh, of the committee and the existence of the committee. In particular, the five priority areas that we have identified, which includes transportation, mental health, housing homelessness and digital equity. Uh, we're going to continue this conversation and, uh, the hope, we've been working with Dr. McGregory, that we, uh, are going to be looking at making sure that this committee is sponsored, fully sponsored by all the, uh, by all the institutions. So there is a, there is a, a, a much greater vested interest from us, from the board. This is currently a city committee from us, from this, from the school district and also from the county. So we'll give, give some more updates next month. Thank, thank you so much, President Morello.
Student Senate. Why, would you like to speak to Student Senate?
Uh, yes. Uh, so Student Senate, uh, we're still doing well. Um, we average about a little over twenty-five, uh, in terms of like, you know, active members, um, who comes in a bi-weekly Zooms. Our next meeting is scheduled to be, uh, this Wednesday, um, from five to six thirty. Um, Student Senate, our Instagram, we are planning to host another IG takeover with, uh, so community members as well as those from the Board of Education or in or, um, central office. Uh, so far, people are pretty, um, confident and abilities to carry out the remaining initiatives for our committees. Um, the two being, uh, the anti-racism committee and other the civics, um, committee. Um, lastly, we already have started to, um, gather interest of those who will be running for president and board ref, uh, for the following school year.
Thank you, Gordon. Madison Schools and Community Recreation, MSCR Advisory Committee. Madison Schools and Community Recreation, MSCR Advisory Committee, Board Member Vandermeulen.
Yes, we have another meeting coming up on March 16th, and we are forwarding six new advisory committee membership applicants to our committee. And we should have info then, and we're really looking forward to that.
Thank you so much, Board Member Vandermeulen. I move that the Board of Education authorize the district to request a DPI waiver from the school attendance enforcement requirement as set forth in the Wisconsin statute 118.16 and for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Board Member.
Yeah, I have a question about this. The attendance waiver memo tells us specific, very specific pieces of why we may need to apply for this wa waiver. I'm curious if applying for the waiver in its entirety waives all our attendance requirements or if it's very specific to the to the pieces that are referenced in in the in the waiver memo.
So actually with the waivers, the way it works is I tend to give you more information than may necessarily be required for DPI. And these are the areas that we've identified where we may run into issues with compliance. With regards specifically to this waiver, I worked extensively with Dr. Esser and her team on being able to capture attendance, and this is the actual process that we're using. So I doubt that it'll change between now and when it's actually submitted to DPI.
Okay, so when we're voting tonight, we're voting on just like for you.
You're just, you're voting for to give us permission to request the waiver, not on specifically what the waiver document that we present to DPI says.
Okay, but you'll come back to us with what you are submitting after it's complete.
Sure.
Okay, that would be great. And then I guess my my broader question is, is if we, in in addition, in thinking about the need to have an attendance waiver and broader issues of attendance, if we can get a report at some point on on the the challenges we might be having with attendance and how that relates to student mental health.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Um, in addition to just getting a little bit more of an analysis on what's going on with attendance this year, it would be helpful to understand that if we continue to offer virtual options beyond this school year, how we can do attendance in virtual options and be in compliance with DPI. Because it sounds like one of the reasons we may not be in compliance is because attendance in virtual is challenging.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things that we talked about in the last meeting, and I do think we get to a point where virtual to just online and online different mechanism for attendance and the whole purpose I mentioned about student agency was to have appropriate online program, I think, would be without the issues of what we see right now in some of the virtual too.
All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. I move that the Board of Education authorize the district to request a DPI waiver from the instructional minutes requirement as set forth in Wisconsin statute 121.21 half for the 2021, 2022 school year. Second, Maya. Any discussion? Board Member Carusi?
Thank you. So I am really struggling with the notion that at this point in the pandemic, we need to get a waiver for instructional minutes to close down for three days because of COVID. Do we have snow days or anything else we could use in lieu of getting a waiver to cover that time?
One of the things that I know our General Counsel may want to speak to it as well. When we spoke to the state superintendent of attendance and getting that waiver in terms of just like we were talking about, everyone was considering mental health days, a number of things on the docket that we could do. So it's much safer for us, I I get it in terms of instructional time that we do want to have with our students, but it was just giving us latitude if we have to do else things we would do there.
Yeah, I'm really struggling with this one. I, you know, I I understand the need for flexibility, and our students lost a lot of instructional time last year, and I don't know if I want too much flexibility this year to lose more instructional time, like three days. I feel like we could, you know, potentially cover out of snow days or things like that. And if we're asking for more beyond that, I'm a little concerned about lost learning time, so. I'm uncomfortable with this one.
Yeah, we are, we are as well, but we just wanted to make sure if something happened that, and we don't know now the predictability of what may happen even after break, but for the most part, we're just trying to give ourselves a latitude. And General Counsel is there too, she probably speaks.
Um, yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I will say that unfortunately, our weather is unpredictable as well. And so we can't, while we may be okay right now, we can't calculate that in the future we will be. And unfortunately, you do have to submit the waiver before, you know, in a time where right now we may be okay, but there is the possibility that we won't be.
Board Member Gona Schmidt?
Yeah, I'm just curious, when is the deadline for submitting the waiver, the instructional waiver?
I'm gonna submit them all tomorrow.
But if if we waited to submit the instructional one, do we have leeway and time to not do that one specifically? Get to get us through March weather?
I would not suggest that we do that. We already know that we took the three additional days, and those weren't counted in our calendar when we calculated the initial. The issue is that those three additional days were not in our calendar when we calculated the number of hours or minutes that our students would be in the class. So because we took those days in January, what might otherwise have been our snow days have now been utilized, plus we had to actually use a snow day. And so I don't know that waiting at this point will help us, especially since we did take that that one snow day. I was of the mind to wait, but when we had to take the snow day, then it becomes more imperative that we do it now. And then, you know, as I said, when I submit these to DPI, you know, it's with the understanding that we are doing everything we can to mitigate the number of days out of school, but that at some point, some things are out of our control.
Yeah, how how many days do we have built into the regular school calendar when we plan for a snow day or an ice day?
I don't know who's here that can speak to that.
I would just, I will get back with you with that answer, and I don't want to say wrong. But I I know we have our days built into it. Let me get back to you, but again, on that whole flexibility piece. We're looking at this and saying the waiver, if we have to add days, what would that do for us too right now? And social motion and everything we're looking at, we're trying to look at it more fully, is where it used to just be really easy decision to make it. We're really considering multiple factors, not only for our students, but for our staff as well. We start thinking about adding these days, what would be the ripple effect?
Okay, yeah, I I just, I I would say just like Board Member Carusi, I'm just concerned about waiving instructional minutes. I guess I would be interested in how many we usually build on, like going forward, how many we usually build in, how close we are to that limit right now. And just to the the commitment that we are, we are looking to keep our kids in school as much as possible to the end of the year.
And no doubt, we all are looking at that to make sure we keep our students in school, but we just want to make sure if something came up, we had to.
I'm curious too, with the waiver background application, it says that for any hours of instructional waiver per statute, the DPI must additionally consider the response of the community to the proposed waiver and the length of the school closure. How does that happen? Is that?
The meeting was known as for a public hearing on the waivers.
Okay, so that was today.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Board Member Pearson?
I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around how like, I guess, it's not really pointed to anyone in particular for the administration, but I guess ourselves. Trying to understand why we wouldn't be okay with making a plan if things go south in spring break. Like, like, the whole purpose that we had our earlier conversation around the wellness and about the masking and such was really to make sure that we have a plan in place to mitigate whatever happens after spring break, and then we reassess and then move forward. So I guess I'm just trying to understand how we're not okay with getting a waiver, at least for now. I think that there's been a lot that has been drawn at us for the past two years. And I think as we are trying trying to get back to what a normal is, I think that we have to have some flexibilities, right? I don't think anyone in this room or any of our staff or any teachers, even our kids, no one wants to not be at school at this time. However, like, we also have to be responsible, right? So I, on one hand, I understand, but well, no, actually, I don't understand. I won't, I won't lie, I don't understand how we how we are getting to this conversation of not being comfortable, especially as we are still trying to figure out what the next, next couple of months will look like. And then also in the school year, like moving forward, what that might look like. I don't know if you guys want to answer that, but that's kind of my question.
Yeah, so Board Member Carusi, I'll let you respond, and then I see Board Member Morrell.
Yeah, actually, that raises another question for me, which is, we took those three days off in January to prepare to pivot to virtual. So my thinking is that like, if you come back from a spring break and case numbers are really high, we should just be able to pivot immediately to virtual without having to take more time off. Which to me actually just raises the question, do we need this waiver versus are we well positioned to pivot in the instance of high case numbers? And I hope the second is the true thing, that we we've taken the time we need to to be nimble and to do what we need to do to protect our community.
Board Member Morrell?
First of all, thank you so much, Board Member Pearson, for your comments. And thank you also for allowing for this conversation between the two of you. I don't think we have enough of that. I am of the position that snow days are for snow days. And in Wisconsin, we can never predict. There are, and they vary every year. Yes. I I I feel like as a Brazilian, I want to make a point that I have planned for snow days, and they have not been really, I have been successful in those plans. And, you know, so if we're having a conversation about, we need to make sure that we are doing our business to open the doors always, to the degree possible, that we make sure that our staff and our students and our families are safe. I think everyone in this room and everyone on this call are 100% behind that. So I appreciate Board Member Carusi to bring this up and making sure that we're making the statement that we are in the business of educating our children in person. That's our role. And we are in the business to make sure that this district continue to open the store, its doors so that our students and our staff can be in the buildings and 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 learning and education is happening. So I I really urge us to to, you know, to think about how we're having this conversation and the confidence that our families and our community need to have, that we are doing our job, which is making sure that every student is is having a learning opportunity in a in a place of a feeling safe. So, yes, those are, those are my remarks.
I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion carries six ones. I move that the Board of Education author MMSD to request the target of public disruption DPI waiver as set forth in Wisconsin State Statute 118.331 MA1 from the educator effectiveness cycle for educators in the 2021, 2022, thereby waiving the requirements to meet Wisconsin statute 115.415 and 120.122M for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki. Any discussion? Board Member. Board Member Carusi and then Board Member Vandermeulen, I see you.
So I wholeheartedly support this as a way to reduce stress and and, you know, worry for our staff. Two questions, however, you know, our staff are all on cycles of educator effectiveness because there's only so many people, a principal or assistant principal can evaluate a year. And will this throw off our cycles so that then our building administrators are suddenly having to try to evaluate twice as many people next year? Or are we going to think about how to re-stagger those cycles to keep the workload manageable for the people who do the evaluation?
That's an interesting question. I do want to say we have done, we did the same waiver last year.
We did it last year, so I'm just kind of wondering, like, at some point, is there going to be a year where there's a lot of educator effectiveness evaluation to do, and it's going to be a lot of stress for everybody? I don't want to just push the stress down the road.
Are you asking about the cumulative impact of both years?
Um, it could be, but I mean, I'm mostly focused on this waiver, because that's what we're known to talk about, but.
We always have, not always, but sometimes you have unique situations like this, and we manage it. And I think this, and Jorge is here too, he can speak to it, is giving staff an option in this. And I think respective what the principals are saying, what the teachers are saying, and we all adjusting right now, but we realize that individuals could make choices and leave for a little bit more. But we're just, that's what we've done, but Jorge is here now, and I have to speak.
Yeah, appreciate the question. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, no, there's definitely a cumulative effect. However, that's part of the work that we do within our department with our educator effectiveness strategists. We work closely with principals to look at who are the folks that have opted into continuing their summer year, who have not had a summer year over the last two years or three years. And we definitely continue to create and support principals in creating a caseload that is, that is reasonable, but also ensuring that folks aren't going so long without getting that feedback through their evaluation process. So, yeah, that is definitely something that is taken into consideration, and it's part of the work that is done with our strategists to support principals and assistant principals and staff as well.
My second question is about the comment in the memo that observational evidence will be needed when principals are considering educators for potential surplus or layoff. How many educators at this point are we, or how many positions are we considering for potential surplus and layoff? How many people will be affected by that need?
Well, that's, that's a great question, too. Ms. Carradine, do you want to address that?
Yes, can you repeat the question so that I I have, I understand?
So the the memo says that for observations related to educator effectiveness, if principals are considering educators for potential surplus or layoff, then they will be required to gather observational evidence. I'm just wondering how many educators at this point we are considering for surplus and layoff, just to know how many people will be affected by that requirement to do observational evidence.
I can't answer that right now, as we're still working on workbooks, and those aren't done yet, so we don't have a definitive number as of yet. But we should have something hopefully by the end of this week or next week, but I can get that to you.
Don't, you don't even have a ballpark figure at this point?
No, I don't want to, I don't even want to guess like that, sorry.
All the question?
Oh, I think Nikki had her.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nikki.
I just wanted to thank everyone for putting this on the agenda. I have spoken to more burned out teachers this year than in my almost five years on the board. And I think it's necessary, and to be honest, trying to do documentation, especially for surplus layers at all in a pandemic, when you cannot always have all your written material because of possible infection exposure, I think is even harder. So I am very much for this, and thank you.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Amanda, I think I missed your vote. Any opposed? Any sentence? Motion carries seven oh. I move that the Board of Education change the March regular meeting date to March twenty second, twenty twenty two at six P M. All those in favor? Motion carries seven oh. I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution attaching territory from the Madison Metropolitan School District, Walton. And attaching Middleton Cross Plains Area School District. Pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute one seventeen point one two, as provided in the documents prepared for this agenda. Item dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ali?
I'm going to amend the, um, waiver, uh, the COVID waiver. So can you read it and then I do it that way, or do you want me to put the changes first?
No, I'm gonna read it and then you're gonna offer your amendment, and I need a second on this motion. And then you need a second on your amendment in order for us to discuss it, okay, Nikki?
Okay, just wanted to check.
I move that ten additional days of COVID hardship leave be granted. In addition to the five C H L days. And two mental health days approved by the Board of Education on January tenth, twenty twenty two. To all full-time and part-time benefits earning employees as set forth in the document prepared. For the regular board meeting dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Second, Nikki.
All right, I have two seconds. And any discussion?
I'd like to emote you to amend.
Board Member Vandermeil?
Yes, I'd like to add your friendly amendment. I move to amend the original motion on COVID relief and sick leave to include the following. That an employee who tests positive or is required to quarantine. An employee or an employee who was app, and an employee who was absent because of a failed system screener. Or waiting for a test result, whether positive or negative. And an employee who had to stay home because a family member had COVID. Or the child's school or daycare was closed due to COVID outbreak, outbreak would all be eligible for COVID sick leave. I request these changes be made retroactive from the beginning of the twenty one, twenty two school year.
Second, define the second discussion.
I had, I had, oh, sorry, I thought you wanted me to explain it.
So the motion was seconded by Board Member Pearson. Any discussion? Board Member Vandermeil?
Yes, I had raised, I had, uh, asked earlier. I had talked to several teachers, then I had talked to Dr. Jenkins, um, on this issue and how. I am for the COVID relief, but I wanted to include, uh, the people that weren't included. Because last time, there were a lot of questions and a lot of emails on, am I included, am I not included? And I felt this provided necessary clarity.
Thank you, Board Member Vandermeil, further discussion?
So I just have a clarifying question. Um, my understanding is that, um, the first five days of COVID leave that we granted. People can take for the reasons that Nikki listed, and then these ten days are different, and is that correct?
I think there was a clear delineation that she was making in, um, when we had talked about the retroactive. So I think it was just a sharp delineation. Nikki, if you want to make that again, because it sounded similar, it was just a little bit added to.
But the, in, in addition to the retroactive piece, there's also, like, who qualifies for this leave? And that she has changed, and I think what the changes she's making brings these days in alignment with the five days we approved back in January. In terms of, like, similar criteria for being able to take them. Is that, is that correct?
I think it sounded similar, just slightly different, and that's why she was making the amendment.
I was making the amendment because this doesn't, this is, this, I wanted to specify exactly who. Got who, um, the specific situations that were questioned in the past. And that's why I wanted to include it. I want the same people included that were included last time, which is everyone, hard time. As long as you make it up, but hard time, long-term subs, um, S E As, behavioral. Assistance, um, teachers. And all our staff, I think it's a necessity there. We can't run a school without, without our dedicated staff. And right now, they're asking for a lot of help. I just think that we could give it to them.
Further discussion, Board Member Thomas Schmidt?
Yeah, the, the question that I had for clarification is how exactly have we implemented what we passed in January? So who has been included already? So I guess I'd ask Ms. Carradine that. When, when what we approved in January was implemented, for what reasons were people granted the ability to use those five days?
So they were pretty much the same that are listed here. Um, there was one where they could use it if a child had to be quarantined. But they had to show proof that that was happening, so they still had to upload the same as this. That was the only difference.
And were they able to use it if they had to, if they failed the symptom screener and had to stay home waiting for a test result?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I guess my question is, is does that have to be in with the motion that we're approving? Or are we already doing that, and is that spelled out sort of in the procedure?
Uh, may I answer that, Chair? The reason why I put it in there like that is because there was a lot of emails and a lot of questions. And then a lot of communication with H R, whether or not it was covered. I have had, some employees said that it was covered. I have one employee who said it wasn't covered. I have one who said it was partially covered. So to avoid any confusion, I figure, be, the law, the lawyer in me says to create. The mo- the simplest form of the statute is the one that, to me, is the best. It clearly delineates what I want, which is why I put it in there specifically.
Um, I guess the other, it's just a comment that, um, in the future, I really hope that these proposals to support our staff. Was in a work group, we can hash out some of these details before we sit down to vote on them. It's really difficult to do this work through amendments. It's much easier to do this work through a feedback process at a workgroup meeting, followed by a vote on something we all have talked about and feel comfortable with. And the past three votes we've taken on steps to help our staff with emergency leave or extra pay. Have come to us at the last minute at a regular meeting without that opportunity for discussion and clarification. So in the future, um, I'm just requesting that please let requests like this come to us at a workgroup meeting before we vote on it.
So I will say, we do have the option of delaying this vote, and we've had the option of delaying other votes related to, to things that we need. So I think the reason that these have kind of been navigated in the way that they have is because they've been needing kind of urgent needs as they. Um, and I, I share your desire, Chris, for us to have the most thoughtful process available. But I do think, um, it's important to acknowledge that we have the option right now to delay our vote on this. And if you're suggesting we do that and take this to workgroup, I'm gonna ask you to. And specific to this.
Um, at this point, let's just focus on the amendment.
Board Member Marley?
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I will say, I appreciate, uh, my work colleague Cruzie. At nine o'clock, having to understand and also making sure that everyone that is watching us understands what we're voting, what's different. Who is gonna be, it's, it's not the most, uh, uh, it doesn't feel as transparent as we wanted to be. Particularly on this really, uh, heavy topic. I, I still, I'm, I'm a bit confused. And I feel like we have heard different versions of different things. And I also, i- i- specifically, I get confused when people say, I had COVID and then I was not able to get all the days. Or I wasn't sure how many days, or, and that makes me confused. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a way that we can clarify, um, Ms. Carradine, um, or Dr. Jenkins. Like, what is, what is happening right now? What is it, are we having now all our staff that are, uh, benefits eligible? Hard time and full time, able to get up to ten days, and those ten days can be consecutive. Um, for COVID, whether it's they, them get COVID themselves, or they are, um. Caring for a child with COVID. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, let me have Ms. Carradine speak to that, because as it was written, is the way that we were to exercise it. I have two had individuals just ask me questions, and I would send them to H R. Sometimes there was a misunderstanding, but it was clear, uh, in how the recommendation first went forward, if you approve. But Ms. Carradine, if you could speak to that in terms of the request, uh, of individuals who have put in and. Respond to that, attempt a question from, uh, Board.
Okay, thank you. So the five days, let's start with the five days that we had that was done in January. So we did a frequently asked question, so if you needed, um. COVID, if you had, if you were experiencing COVID nineteen symptoms and seeking medical diagnosis, that was one reason. If you were advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID nineteen exposure, that was two. And then the third one was care for a family member who is quarantined. Those were the three things that we used. To delineate using the COVID nineteen leave, those five days.
So now we're approving ten additional days in the same, the same parameters that you just described.
The only difference is the five, the five days that we had from January are not retroactive.
Mine would be retroactive and would include the childcare. That's the main difference.
That's the main difference on yours, Nikki?
Yes.
We're clarifying. So if, if someone took the five days, that's, you know, after January. They still would have, they still qualified to get ten additional days.
Cause you.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, no, I stepped on you. I, Ms. Carradine, were people able to use the five days if they had sick leave of their own left? Or did they have to be out?
Say that again. So are you saying to use the COVID leave pay? They could use the COVID leave pay.
But on the five days, did you have to be out of sick leave in order to use COVID?
No.
Okay.
No, you could use it. And just, this motion has retroactive in it. The ten days that we are requesting, um, June thirty, whichever is later, with a retroactive usage date of September twenty third, twenty twenty one. So this one does have retroactivity in it.
So I just want to, I'm sorry, President Modro, I just want to make sure that I fully understand this, um, so we can, you know, make sure that this is on record. So if, if people have not used their five days, will they have fifteen days? If people, right, okay, so if people use their five days, and we are now passing a resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, we're passing, uh, a motion to those ten days to be retroactive. They, they will be able to, you know, whatever other days that they had to take, they'll be able to have those, those days, additional days. So Nikki, what is the difference between your motion? Are you just making sure that specific units are getting?
Yes. Because it was being done in it, in a manner in which it, those who had to challenge it often was inequable. Those who could not afford or had the time to challenge it didn't have the time to do so.
I'm not really.
That's, so that's why I put it away, everybody.
Well, thank you so much, President Modro.
Girl, this big elder bug thing.
Yeah, um, you know, my, my question is, is that I, I understand in the memo, it's written that it's retroactive, but that is not what's in the motion. And so, I'm, I'm concerned about that, um. I'm concerned that we're trying to understand all of the pieces of this that fit together. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until next week.
I'm going to object to that. Our staff desperately needs it, and no one's ruled on my motion.
So, Board Member Vandermeil, I'm like, you don't, you don't have to object.
Sorry, I'm gonna turn.
This needs a second in order to move.
I did get a second, Maya did.
Nikki got a second, so we have to vote on Nikki's. And if Nikki's is then voted down, then we can, then Chris can offer another motion. However, Chris can ask for a friendly amendment or a request to Nikki to table it. And Nikki can either decline it or not.
I decline it.
So now we have to vote on her motion.
Board Member Cruzie, and then we can vote.
So I'm, like, when I look at the memo that we were given, the reasons why a staff member can take COVID leave. Don't line up with the reasons that they got for the first five days. I mean, Ms. Carradine said it was if you experienced symptoms, if you're advised to quarantine, or if you need to care for a family member. And the memo we got about these additional ten days, family members are not mentioned as a legitimate reason to be able to take the COVID sick leave. Um, there's really just two reasons. An employee has tested positive, um, or, and is subject to an isolation order. Or the employee is unvaccinated, has an exemption, and is ordered to quarantine. So Nikki, now I'm really confused because you said that your motion was mostly about listing all the employee groups. And actually, my concern is that I want to make the, the reasons why someone can take COVID leave match. Like, I want all fifteen days to be the same, and I like the set of reasons in the first five days better. So if your amendment doesn't do that, then I think.
I think it could be combined with it.
Board members, may I make a recommendation? Um, I think this conversation is getting really complicated to follow. Um, I would recommend that we vote on Nikki's amendment. And then if there's a subsequent amendment, we vote on that amendment. Or if there's a motion to table, we vote on the motion to table. Um, I don't know that we'll get to all the answers that we're seeking tonight, if that helps to clarify where we are.
It really works in response to what Chris was just saying in terms of, uh, kind of continuity between COVID sick days. And that question, I do think we should vote on Nikki's motion. Yeah, either return to the original motion, use their motion, or other amendments. Yes.
Um, I just want to make sure, uh, Board Member Cruz, were you offering a friendly amendment to?
No, at this point, no, like, but I would like Nikki to read her amendment again, because now I'm confused about the content of Nikki's amendment.
Additional, I was using the form of the original amendment and adding what I had added. What I had added was, and let me read it, because I want to get it exact, I, so give me one second while I pull it back up. Because my eye is acting up. I said, my friendly amendment to the COVID policy. I keep the original motion, which is what I forgot to say in the beginning, which is why it's so damn confusing, and I apologize. That's on me. I, I move to amend the original motion, keeping the former, the original, in the original motion. But including the following. To include any employee who tests positive or is required to quarantine. Two, to include any employee who was absent because of a failed sip, the symptom screener or waiting for a test result. Whether positive or negative, or it said that you had to be negative for COVID, is the way I took. And three, to include an employee who had to stay home because a family member had COVID or child's school or daycare had COVID. And would, and those individuals would also be able, would be eligible for sick leave. And I request that all these changes be made retroactive from the beginning of the twenty one, twenty two school year.
Clear enough.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Any extensions? Motion carries for three.
Abstaining, Maya Pearson, Chris Gomis Schmidt, and Ali Maldro. Thank you.
All right, discussions for plans to establish a safety ad hoc.
We, that was just voting on the amendment.
Was it, it was a friendly amendment, so it was a.
So friendly amendment doesn't really exist. So you just voted on an amendment.
Yeah.
Great. Now let's vote on the amendment through the original motion, the whole thing together.
I would, can I still make the motion to table this to next week?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to table this to a special meeting on March seventh.
Another second, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yep.
I move that ten additional days of COVID hardship leave be granted in addition to the five PHL days and two mental health days approved by the Board of Education on January tenth, twenty twenty-two to all full-time and part-time benefits earning employees a step forward in the documents prepared for the regular board meetings dated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes.
All those in favor? Any extensions? Any opposed? Motion carries six, one.
Thank you.
Discuss plans for establishing an ad hoc committee relative to student safety and wellness. For, you've stuck with us for a long time to be able to talk about this. Thank you for giving us tonight. Thank you for all of the work that you did to research and create this ad hoc. I'm excited to get to hear from you. Uh, we're gonna hear from you first.
Thank you, um, and, you know, thank you all for all the work that you all do. Uh, so going into like my opening here. Uh, you know, as we all know, disengagement and violence in our schools has been an issue for decades. Here in the district, we want to prioritize safety and student wellness for our students when they come into our schools to learn and engage with their peers. With lingering effects of COVID-19 pandemic and continued gaps in community mental health services and wellness, we see this issue of disengagement and violence escalate. Such a circumstance brings us to this proposal in establishing the creation of an ad hoc committee relative to safety and student wellness. What makes this ad hoc committee different from the previous ones is that this committee will be, uh, dedicated to working directly with mental health partners, community members, advocates, youth, and more. And not only visioning, but also implementing district-wide policies that center safety and wellness for our students. So please, we ask you all to help us in the creation of this committee, so we can do our part in ensuring that students in our schools feel safe, have a sense of the community, and that they are getting the rest of justice, means to have support that they need. Um, now pass it off to Maya, if I'm able to do that.
Yes, you are. Thank you, Gordon. Um, and so I was just gonna speak on just the charge and the reasoning why that we need to continue doing this. Um, so we just wanted to make sure that we have, um, centered the, we're creating and implementing the vision of safety and student wellness through community engagement and action. And we say that because we feel as though it's not just only about, you know, physical safety, it's all the other pieces. It's emotional, it's, it's the, um, the, the mental safety. And so really focusing on a space where students and young people and administrators and teachers and community all together are able to create what that looks like. Um, and what we really wanted to do is make sure that we center student voices extremely heavy in this because they are the ones who are going to be the, they're the children in the school. So, um, we wanted to make sure that we do that. In addition to that, we wanted to create a system of accountability. So this ad hoc to us isn't just another ad hoc talking about stuff and talking about safety, talking about, you know, wellness in the, in a sense of like the meeting of the meeting of the meeting of the meeting. So this is really action-based, and we really wanted to make that, um, focus. So we'll be doing the meetings, um, and then we're going to do follow-up. And so there will be accounting, accountability pieces, um, that would be added, uh, once the ad hoc committee is concluded. Um, and yes, pass it off to Alanda.
Thank you so much, uh, Board Member Pearson. And I, at first I wanted to say, uh, so proud and, and so humbled to be serving alongside Gordon Allen. Uh, you know, you, you are, you're shifting the way we are, um, you know, engaging in this conversation. I really appreciate, uh, your input and our conversations and just getting to know you better. Uh, so I, I, I just wanted to say I'm really humbled for, for, you know, to serve alongside you and to learn from you. Uh, our, our, uh, young people have been teaching us a lot over the past few years. And I, you know, we've been, we've been listening, and it's time to really show action. So I'll talk briefly about, uh, a proposed structure that is, um, that departures from the ways in which we have engaged with committees. Uh, we did look at, uh, previous committees around similar topics. We, some of us did talk to a few, uh, folks that served in these committees to see what has worked well, what could be approved. And here's what we're proposing. First, uh, with strong recommendation of Barb Osborne to have a small committee. Uh, so this committee, this, this core team will have thirteen total voting members. Uh, and we wanted to make sure also that the adult voice was not overpowering, uh, the conversations, whi- which we tend to do, uh, myself included. Uh, so, um, Gordon is gonna be my co-chair, will have, uh, you know, a, a representation in the, in the uh, facilitation structure of the conversation. Uh, we'll have high school students, and Gordon will talk a little bit more about that. And we will have, uh, we'll have systems folks, uh, the CD, the county, and the district to be part of this conversation and folks that have a position to make change within those systems. Uh, we are recommending also that there will be three members at large that, uh, can also inform and continue to uh, lift up this discharge for us. Um, we added, for sustainability of the, the work, we added an advisory non-voting member that will always, uh, be in those meetings, uh, but will take, uh, the, the role once the term of the chair of, of the board member that is a chair, one of the chairs, uh, expired. So that's the essence of the core team. Uh, the other, uh, ways in which, uh, the, um, the, um, connections to this core team will be, uh, support staff, and they are gonna be non-voting. And we're gonna make sure that, you know, that, uh, we are very topic-oriented, very task-oriented. So we're not, uh, being repetitive of, uh, the work of previous committees. And so that includes our beloved Barb, uh, members of, uh, or a member from the Resort of Justice Team, uh, student service staff, in particular, um, mental health staff, uh, interpreters, uh, and other additional staff, and, uh, uh, and as well as additional staff from the city or county as they wish. And then the core team will begin their work around this vision and discharge, and then engaged with, uh, what we're calling a committee's stakeholders. And the reason for that, the, the backdrop for that is that we heard from multiple previous committee members that system, you know, folks would be coming to those committees, and they would speak their language, right? So whether it was, uh, high schooler, uh, you know, whether it's the high school staff, and they would be speaking around, you know, things around high school, the special ed folks would be speaking to special ed folks. The CD folks would be talking about CD. The juvenile justice would be talking about juvenile. And, and there was a lot of people not listening. There was a lot of talking, but not, you know, necessarily listening, understanding. So we wanted to dedicate, uh, space for our families and our students, uh, first and foremost. We, um, also discussed making sure that, you know, the, the, all the meetings are flexible. So, you know, making sure that we're reaching out and collaborating with those schools, with the high schools. Uh, and in particular, the, the key targeted to, uh, institutionally and historically marginalized students and families. Uh, we'll have one with, uh, community partners and advocates. So this is our current partners. They are also coming to this conversation from a very different perspective. Uh, so those, we listed a few, the YWCA, Briar Patch, and Freedom Inc., to name a few. And then there will be a separate one, uh, for, uh, professionals that, uh, could continue to inform and lift up this work, uh, in particular around mental health and wellness, uh, physical health. Uh, and I, I see that there is a duplication of wellness professionals. We really wanna make sure that the wellness professionals are in there. Um, and CD, county, and state, uh, staff and officials and elected officials as well. In particular, public health, the human services, uh, Dane County Sheriff and the Madison, uh, Police Department. So that's the layout of the stakeholder meetings. Um, we didn't get too much into how many, you know, meetings it would happen uh, for the stakeholders. It's, you know, obviously, we needed to have more than one meeting. This is a, this is an important conversation that everyone is gonna want to engage. Uh, but the core, you know, we wanted to leave to the core team to make the, 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 the further design of how those stakeholders will, will come in. The last thing I'll say is around the frequency, as you see in there, uh, will be scheduled collaboration with the stakeholder groups. And, uh, the, the core team will, uh, the proposed time timeline is for us to begin meeting, uh, March seventeenth, and then meet bi-weekly, uh, at least into, uh, April. That's a two, uh, a, a, that's a two, uh, Gordon, again.
Yeah, so as, uh, Board Member Marley mentioned, that we will have youth as part of our core team. Um, I believe the best way to go about, you know, fulfilling those seats will be to go through Suda Senate. Uh, the reason is that Suda Senate already has to reach at, um, the four conference high schools and the two, um, alternative ones. Um, and we believe that since Suda Senate does, has tried to do similar work with this, we already can gather as a lot more interest. And not to mention that this will be a great opportunity for those who would like to serve as next year's president or, um, board rep to, uh, you know, get a, the experience, um, necessary to be part of such work as this.
Board members, we'll come together to vote on the creation of the ad hoc on the thirteenth of March in a special meeting. Before then, board members can each send one person that you recommend be on the ad hoc committee to Barb. Um, I asked that folks do that really quickly because we don't have a ton of time, and please confirm with people before you put their name in, that they want to do it. Um, I said publicly at a board meeting that I would make sure we had a, a sexual violence, sexual health expert on this. I have reached out to the RACIS Center, and there's one of their co-executive directors, Dana Talavod, has agreed to join the ad hoc. Um, I think me and Barb are constructing what the charge for the ad hoc will be when we have that conversation on the thirteenth. Um, but I think that's as much of an update as we can withstand for this evening. Gordon, I do wanna thank you for your leadership and your time and all of the thought that we gave to this. I also wanna thank Board Member Ananda Morelli and Board Member Maya Pearson. Um, you all poured a lot of heart and soul into this work and have engaged our community around this work really effectively over the course of, of the last few weeks as we've come together. Um, and it's, it's really necessary work. So thank you all so much for doing it. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, oh, happy birthday, Barb Osborne.
Happy birthday, Barb!
Happy birthday, girl.
Thank you for spending the day before your birthday. Have a nice night, y'all. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
You know the thing.